Hello, everybody. I think the stage crew has rearranged the scenery. We're ready to go for the council meetings. Is everybody here? I'll say, okay, here's one. Okay, all present accounted for. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please read, call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protem Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Here.
Okay, and we have a quorum. If you'll all rise and join me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, agenda review. I have had a request that I think probably is a good idea of, we have a bunch of committee assignments that need to be made tonight for sure and shouldn't take a lot of time. So that is, what, item number five?
Great.
Okay, item number five, if there's no objection, we pull that one forward and take care of that. Okay? Is there any other?
On the consent calendar, I'd like to pull L for discussion.
Okay. Okay, with those changes, the agenda is approved as submitted. We have a happy and sad occasion tonight. Happy because one of our own is getting to retire after, well, more than 27 years in public service, but 27 with the city of Ojai. Ruben? Do you want to, and Greg, you're here too. Okay, I've got a plaque. Ruben Martinez, I think many of you know Ruben. Most of us. Ruben was born here in Ojai, as I understand, with the family.
Three months. I think he's three months old moved here, right?
Right. Born in Riverside, but I've been here all my life.
Pretty close.
An early import, good. Okay, yeah. And as I understand it, is a child. You lived right there at what, Montgomery, in the, what is now the bike path or was it railroad track?
Bike path right there at 313. And we were just talking about, we also lived right over here behind City Hall.
Yeah, and then?
And we were talking about our baseball field where PD's at right now.
And what, you and your sister used to hop a train to go out and see your mother at the packing house?
Well, she should go out and do a little dance on the railroad tracks first, dress in a little white dress, and then the engineers would throw us out candy.
Yeah.
And then they found out that my mom worked at the packing house over there, so occasionally the engineer would pick us up and give us a ride out there and visit mom. And then we'd get back on the train, and he'd drop us off at my grandma's.
Oh.
Can't do that nowadays.
No, you're not.
So, anyway, Ruben's been with the city as a 27 years. He's retired here in December, a well-earned retirement. I assume that you will be sticking around. I understand, like my grandchildren, when you were a young man, you played at Nordoff on the football team, and you have, what, nephews that played Eagle and also on the Rangers?
Right. One of the nephews, he got two CIF rings, and the other one, just, they pulled the Citrus League this year.
Right, so, deep roots with the town and a lot of good service. Greg, would you like to, as Ruben's supervisor, tell, give us some of his secrets, the things?
You know, I've only, I've only got seven years of Ruben, but certainly do appreciate his extensive knowledge. You know, it's one of the things we have here is pretty high turnover in some areas, but not, not in Ruben's department. It's been, I think most of the guys been there for a long time. So for 27 years, Ruben knows the story about everything we look at around here, you know? And he doesn't give it up, so we deal anything, we either, we get the full history, we're out there looking at the demo garden where he used to play, you know, miniature golf when the Hobsons, I guess, owned this, he used to play miniature golf out there, he let them play.
Yeah.
And so he knows the history of all that area, not to mention every sidewalk and pipe that's in around town here, every storm drain and what happened with them. So he's got great institutional history, and he's done a heck of a job, and I think it's been always funny, when I walk around, my kids, I guess my kids are grown up, but I always had my seven-year-old trained to, when we walked around town and saw an issue, and they saw me stop and look at it, they'd go, "Should we call Ruben?", you know? They always knew to get, they knew how to get Ruben's phone number on there and call it for me, and I would leave a message, "Hey, Ruben, the light's out over here in the arcade", or something like that, you know? And so, so he's always been great responding to all these things, all these years, and we certainly appreciate it. And he certainly has played a few practical jokes on me along the way, you know, which has been good. I think one of the best ones, I, what we were doing, we were pouring something over there, and we had formed it up, and there was some loose discussion on how to do it, and I was going to look at it and say, you know, they were getting started on it, and he brought me over, and it was set up in a different way, that one of the guys in the crew got the story a little off, so we were going to change it significantly. And there just happened to be a concrete truck coming down the road, so Ruben said, "Hey, Greg, well, here comes the concrete." So we're kind of?
Concrete truck's here.
It sits here.
There it goes.
So I was in shock, and, no, no, we're going to pour the wrong form, you know, and, but he got a pretty good ribbon, but there's a ton of those around. So it's always been fun working with you. We always appreciate it. It's a good laugh, and I think Ruben's hardest trick is going to be, I think he get, he can barely get through any shopping store around town without getting borderline assaulted to go, "Hey, Ruben, can you, I just saw this little thing in town, can you go fix this?" So we need to get him a, I think at his other retirement party, we gave him a nice little emblem he can wear on his neck that says, "I'm retired, call the city", you know? So we appreciate it, Ruben, all the, yours was the service.
It's been great taking care of our hometown here and working with the community. Really want to thank you all. I mean, it was fun. It was all good.
Can I say a couple of things?
Yeah, sure.
I just, you know, maybe four or five simple words. Kind, considerate, knowledgeable, always worked for the city's best interest. You are, you know, when I was contracting and I was allowed to work with, with the city, you were by far one of the best in city employees that I had ever worked with in all the cities here in the county. Again, knowledgeable, kind, considerate, thoughtful. There isn't a thing that this man hasn't done that doesn't think first city and then Ruben or someone else second. He's just an incredible guy, and we were very fortunate to have you and blessed to have your family here. And I was blessed as a coach to be able to coach your grand, your cousins and nephews and?
That's right.
Your family, yes, I am. I have a couple of those rings too.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just ditto. Been a pleasure, been a pleasure.
We have the?
Just real quick, I know there's a lot of, been said about Ruben, so I don't need to pile on, but I will just briefly. Again, Ruben, thank you for all the, you know, we've worked together for the past almost 10 years here, and all, I appreciate, you know, every day, everything, what they said is true. You were always here, always dedicated, and it was always amazing to me. Even the slightest, smallest issue, I would bring it to your attention, and boy, it was often the next day that it was taken care of. So really just want to say how much we appreciate everything that you did here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ruben.
Put it up. On my hand, could you? It's not often the mayor gets to stand next to a retiree of 27 years, so I think he's going to.
Ruben Martinez, Public Works Supervisor, May 21st, 1990 to December 27th, 2018. In appreciation for 28 years of unwavering service and dedication ensuring that the city of Ojai preserves its special character.
Come on around.
They want a picture with your plaque.
Smile, Ruben.
Thank you. Hey, Ruben, it's the honor. Let us, let us shake your head.
Thank you, Ruben. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ruben.
Be a stranger, Ruben.
Great guy.
Okay. My agenda that I had. Was it Purloined?
You have another presentation?
Okay, there we got it. Okay, we do have Michelle Ellison with us, and a topic that's been on our minds for some time, also editorials in the newspaper, but it's a good thing to get everybody's attention to something that I think in the long term is going to be very helpful for the community. James, are you going to kick it off?
If I may, if you'll indulge me, thank you, Mayor and Council. I wanted to give an introduction because, for one, I have been in several CPA meetings with Michelle, and she has been a source of information for the whole Clean Power Alliance and for the city as well. So I just wanted to give a little bit of an introduction about her, but also a little bit of background on Clean Power Alliance. I think everybody in this room is pretty aware of it, but we are, you know, always trying to reach more audiences, so we're trying to get information out on our website, on our Facebook page here, and then people have probably received mailers in the last couple of weeks as well about Clean Power Alliance, and there's going to be some more mailers coming to residents both within and outside of the city. But so just the quick bit of background is that the city joined LA Community Choice Energy Authority back in December of 2017 with the goal of giving residents and businesses a choice of energy providers, competitive rates, more renewable energy to decrease greenhouse gas emissions, and more local control over energy. Since that time, the name has changed to Clean Power Alliance, but the goals remain the same, and the Clean Power Alliance, over that time, has been working towards launching and is now at the point where, after much work, they're going to launch for residential customers within the city and in the Ojai Valley in February next month. So we're kind of trying to make sure everybody's aware. That'll include 30 other cities in addition to Ojai and unincorporated Ventura County. Within the city, we have selected the 100% clean energy tier as the default, but I'd like to introduce Michelle, who serves as the board member alternate for the city of Ojai and on the Clean Power Alliance board, and she's going to explain more about the tiers, pricing, and options as we get closer to rollout here.
Okay, thank you, James. Michelle?
All right. Thank you, James, for the introduction. As he'd mentioned, we're about to launch service next February, so we thought it'd be beneficial to provide a brief overview, background refresher, as much of this won't come as any new information, and the benefits of Clean Power Alliance to our community. Clean Power Alliance is our new electricity supply provider, offering clean renewable energy at competitive rates. Clean Power Alliance is a community choice aggregation. In 2002, following the energy crisis, California passed legislation which allowed for community choice aggregation, giving cities and counties like ours the opportunity to join together to become their own electricity providers. CCAs introduce competition to traditional investor-owned utilities like Southern California Edison and allow communities to take control of purchasing their own power, make energy decisions locally, and reinvest funds back into their communities. Before Clean Power Alliance, we didn't have a choice about where we got our electricity. Now, SE, or excuse me, SE was a sole provider. Now, we have an alternative. There are currently 19 operational CCAs in the state of California, and more are coming. They have proven to be a viable alternative to IOUs. The state estimates that within the next few years, by the mid 2020s, more than 80% of all electricity customers will receive their power from non-IOU providers like Clean Power Alliance. This is the direction we are going. Clean Power Alliance is a nonprofit entity formed through a joint powers, excuse me, sorry. All right. Oops, back, sorry. It is a nonprofit entity, there it is, okay. It's a nonprofit entity formed through a joint powers authority made up of 32 public agencies across LA and Ventura counties. It's governed by a board of directors, which includes an elected official from each member city and county. Mayor Johnson is our primary director, and as James had mentioned, I have served as the alternate director for the city of Ojai. Having a board of a local elected officials mean that Clean Power Alliance answers to the communities it serves and is accountable to the public. Our meetings are open and transparent. As service launches, Clean Power Alliance will serve approximately 3 million people and 1 million customer counts, making it the fifth largest electricity provider in the state. Here's a list of all 32 member agencies. The city of Ojai joined in December 2017, and most of the rest of Ventura County is participating as well, including the unincorporated areas of the county, so this applies to all of us in Ojai Valley. Here's a simple illustration of how it works. So SE's used to handle both electricity generation and distribution. Now, instead of SE procuring electricity on our behalf, Clean Power Alliance will do so. SE will continue to deliver electricity, handle billing, and be responsible for resolving any electricity service issues. Nothing else changes. In terms of what stays the same, SE will continue to manage the delivery of electricity, send one bill, manage account services and rebates and incentives.
Michelle?
Yes.
Go back to that previous slide.
Sure.
So we're getting our electricity from solar, wind, and what's that third icon?
The third icon. I don't know if that's geothermal, I don't know, that's my guess, I don't know what the, the plant.
But?
So it's a mix of, so in terms of the clean power, we have small hydro, solar, wind, geothermal, those are the sources of renewable energy.
Solar.
I don't know what the plant is supposed to represent, honestly.
Okay.
Any other questions at this time?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and so you see SE is in the middle, they are still maintaining all the transmission of electricity to our homes and businesses. Okay, so in terms of what Clean Power Alliance has to offer, it's bringing us competitive rates, a choice of providers, higher renewable content, lower emissions, local management and control, and the ability to create future incentives and programs for our communities. So service began last year for municipal and commercial accounts in LA County, South Pasadena and Rolling Hills Estates, but that was a small portion of the entire energy load, so the big rollout is actually happening this year for the remaining customers in Clean Power Alliance service territory. Beginning next month, in February, service will expand to all residential customers across the service territory, including Ojai, and then in May, all commercial and municipal accounts will begin service. Customers receive four notices in the mail. Residential customers receive their first one back in December, hopefully you all received yours, and then the next one will come out in the next week or so, and then two following the launch of service.
Michelle, who sends those notices?
Clean Power Alliance sends them out, and they're kind of phased because they're sending it about basically?
Not Southern California Edison.
Correct. Those are all from Clean Power Alliance, and it's basically notifying customers of the change and directing them to the website and providing some additional information. So Clean Power Alliance offers three rate plans. Lean power, which is 36% renewable, clean power, which is 50% renewable, and 100% green power, which is 100% renewable. And I don't know why the lean power graphic seems to be off there. So anyway, the small portion's blue, it's supposed to be blue in that one. Ojai, as James had mentioned, made the 100% green power our default plan for the community, which means you don't have to do anything if you wish to stay with that option. How much will it cost? So this rate comparison chart shows the difference in rates. The first column has the three rate options offered by Clean Power Alliance, lean, clean, and 100% green power. The middle column compares them against SE's base rate option, and the last column compares them against SE's comparable rate option. So we'll look at the middle column for now. Currently, lean power is 1% to 2% less than SE's base rate, clean power is 0% to 1% less, and 100% green power is 7% to 9% more than SE's base rate. For your reference, SE's base rate is made up of 34% renewable, just so you know what we're comparing it against. So we're comparing against SE's base rate because that's what a vast majority of customers currently have, but it's not an apples-to-apples comparison exactly. So when we actually compare it against SE's comparable rate options, as you can see on the clean power, with the 50% and the 100% green power, the 100% green power is less than SE's 100% option, comparable option.
Michelle?
Yes.
Is there any place to go to compare to other rate options and base rates, say, time-of-day pricing? Or peak load rates?
You can get exact, there's a bill calculator online where you can actually?
It's on the, on the community energy website?
Yep, and I'll show you that right?
I don't need to know, I just need to know, I can do.
So there's, there's a great resource on the Clean Power Alliance's website, they have a bill calculator, so you can actually enter your account information and get very specific drill-down information about your?
I want everybody to know that.
The impact on your bill.
Yeah, okay.
So this is kind of a, I drew up this illustration about a sample monthly bill, because, you know, it's easier to see what this could actually mean in terms of impact to our financial, our own bills. So, oh, that's actually, I forgot to say though, before this on the slide, an important point to make, is that customers can switch between the plans at any time and at no cost, so you can go up, down, you know, move around, and can opt out and return to SE if you choose to do that. Care, FARA, medical baseline, level pay, and summer discount programs still apply to qualified customers. So back to this sample monthly bill amount illustration. So say a customer's average monthly bill with SE was $50. If you look at the 100% green power option, it would cost about $4.50 more per month to have that option. It would be a break even for the clean power option, and for the lean power option, it would save you 50 cents. And a customer with a higher monthly bill of, say, $200 on the bottom line, it would cost just about $18 more for 100% renewable energy, the cost of a pizza, or break even at 6, 50, the 50% option, and the lean power option saved $2. Worth noting is that Care, FARA, and medical baseline, those, those customers will receive the 100% green power option at no additional cost, so they wouldn't face any bill premium. They would, they'll pay what they were paying to SE for the base rate.
Can you pass?
Yes.
Because that's really an important point?
Yes.
That that editorial in the VC Star did not address what you just said, so.
So because we've defaulted at 100%, any low-income customer that's in Care, FARA, or FARA, those two programs, who are, will be getting 100% renewable at no bill premium.
That's great.
It's wonderful. They can participate in the green economy at no additional cost.
Yeah.
I'm really excited about that.
Yeah.
Thanks for bringing that up. So if you're curious about what your bill will look like, you just have to have your account information, you can go on to Clean Power Alliance's website and plug that in, and they'll give you an exact calculation of what to anticipate. So Ojai has selected 100% green power as a default plan for our community. Ojai is joined by nine other member agencies choosing 100%, and collectively, our communities are the largest group yet, with a combined population of about 3/4 of a million people to make 100% renewable power the default service. I personally find it encouraging that our elected officials, one, recognize that we have a problem in that burning fossil fuels is polluting our atmosphere and driving climate change, and, two, that they are responding to the problem by taking meaningful measures to help us transition to clean energy now. This, in my opinion, is good, responsible governance. So thank you. The 100% green power is a cost-effective way to significantly and immediately reduce pollution and emissions. Emissions are harmful to our health and environment. The costs associated with pollution and climate change, for example, property damage caused by more frequent and severe wildfires, crop loss due to extreme heat waves, and persistent drought, health impacts, et cetera, will be far greater than the nominal charge on our electricity bills to have 100% renewable energy. This is an investment in our community and future generations. It will foster energy independence, distributed energy, and resiliency. It supports creation of local clean energy jobs, and customers, as we've mentioned, in discount programs such as Care, FARA, and medical baseline can participate in 100% green power at no additional cost. So you don't need to do anything to be automatically enrolled in 100% green power, but you can change your service at any time by selecting one of Clean Power Alliance's other two rate options. You also have the option to not take advantage of the benefits Clean Power Alliance has to offer and elect to opt out without penalty and remain with SE. To summarize, the key benefits of Clean Power Alliance for Ojai residents and businesses include: Choice. We all get a choice about who our electricity provider is and how much renewable content we want. Delivery and reliability. With Clean Power Alliance, we receive the same delivery system, billing and support we've always known from SE, only the source of our power generation changes. Clean Power Alliance offers highly competitive rates and the added benefits of higher renewable content. Special rates and programs are still available, and Clean Power Alliance will develop new and unique programs exclusively for local customers. And last, Clean Power Alliance is locally operated and accountable to our communities. So here are some frequently asked questions, and there are dozens more on Clean Power Alliance's website. I urge everyone to check it out, it's a great resource. So some of the questions, does Clean Power Alliance replace Southern California Edison? We covered this earlier, and the answer is no. SE continues to deliver our power and maintain lines and send us a bill and resolve electricity service issues. Clean Power Alliance instead generates our electricity on our behalf and purchases that power. Where does Clean Power Alliance's power come from? I've heard that quite a few times. Most of, excuse me, Clean Power Alliance's energy is procured on behalf of its member communities from mostly non-polluting, clean, and renewable sources such as solar, wind, and hydroelectric power. It does not use coal or nuclear power. The projects that produce our electricity are located in California and on the Western grid, so connected into California. I had the opportunity a couple of months ago to go and visit some of our new wind turbines that are going up, actually online today, and they'll be serving all of Clean Power Alliance's territory. So it's really exciting to actually see in person the wind turbines that will be powering our homes and businesses. The exact proportion of each of these sources varies by time based on demand and availability, and moving forward, Clean Power Alliance plans to procure steadily increasing amounts of renewable energy, battery storage, including locally generated power that develops our economy and provides jobs in our communities. And how can I be sure that Clean Power Alliance is actually procuring 36, 50%, or 100% renewable energy on my behalf? Clean Power Alliance, like all the other electricity utilities, is required to report to the California Public Utilities Commission and the California Public Utilities, excuse me, California Energy Commission on an annual basis to verify the amount of renewable energy procured for its customers. And last, can I switch between lean power, clean power, and 100% green power rate options? Yes, you can opt to change rates at any time and at no cost. And for more information, you can visit Clean Power Alliance's website, which is cleanpoweralliance.org, and the customer service, 888-585-3788. And then Mayor Johnson and I are also happy to serve as resources if you have any questions. So I guess with that, are there any questions?
Okay, Randy?
I just, starting in February, do we have a support mechanism? This is probably a question for the city manager. Some of us are computer illiterate or challenged. Not me, obviously, but?
Me.
But the reality is, there's going to be people that are not going to opt in or opt out or make those decisions because of the fact they're, they're not good at that. Do we have a support system in place? Are you available? Is James available? Is someone within the city available with some type of online service? Or how do we help someone to make this decision and move forward?
So you're saying for someone who isn't online or on the website?
Right.
Is that what you're saying? Well, you can answer too, and then I have?
Go ahead, Michelle.
So, well, I've made myself available, at least on social media, when I've seen questions about it. I've given my personal number, I'm happy to talk with anyone if they have any questions. So that's the service that I can provide. Certainly, the mailer will have call-in, like this phone number here. For those who are not going online, they can call customer service center who can thoroughly answer questions, and then Steve, if you want to mention what you as a city can do?
Yeah, we can certainly designate staff or staff persons who could assist people that have questions with that. Happy to do that.
I would also imagine that there's a lot of people that don't have computers in this community. So again, how are they going to recognize that they have an opportunity to tap into this service?
Well, if they're, if they're receiving the mailers, there's four mailers, so they should be receiving that in the mail, and the newspaper has been covering it, so we're hoping that the word's getting out well enough by, by this forum, by newspaper, by the mailers that are going out. So if you have any other suggestions about how to get the word out, we'd welcome them.
They can call the number?
They can call the number, absolutely.
To make the change?
Yep.
Is it that?
They call the number to make the change?
Do they call the Clean Power Alliance or Edison or?
The Clean Power Alliance, so they'll call that customer service number if they want to change their rate. Uh-huh.
But let's make crystal, correct me if I'm wrong, but let's make crystal clear. If a customer supports the value of being 100% clean energy, there's nothing they have to do.
That's correct. Everyone is, our entire community is enrolled in Clean Power Alliance and at 100% green power.
Yeah, and if they're a low-income customer, they have special rates, they still retain?
They still retain that discount that they were getting based on those qualifications, and they get the 100% at no bill premium.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We also have pamphlets in both lobbies, hard copy materials.
Again, there was an editorial, it was a Sunday. Some people thought of it as negative. I saw a positive in it. The positive part of it was, is that the newspapers are keeping everybody's feet to the fire to be sure that we do a better job of communicating. And even though they interpreted those who stay in 100% default mode are somehow only doing this because they're altruistic, and I think that in time, everybody will realize that you're doing this for yourselves and for the future of your family and for the future generations. So it's not just altruism. But the fact that they are highlighting this, and there's a lot of explaining and a lot of modification yet to happen, as, you know, we're just getting into the business. Lots of big-dollar expenses, you know, like the, what, the County of Los Angeles fronted what, fifteen million dollars to get this off the ground, which has to be paid back. Edison Company has got some business model issues that they're dealing with, which is that if people are, you know, they're still sending the bills out and delivering power, but they've also got contracts for energy that they still have to fulfill. So they're working through the PUC to backcharge, in effect, people who are leaving the system. So the rates right now, while competitive and even a little savings, one of the questions that people have raised is, is, well, if you don't pay dividends, you know, to your stockholders, and you don't pay taxes, you know, and all these benefits that you're going to get, what's the Clean Power Alliance doing with the money? They're basically getting the thing started and paying all these expenses that go above and beyond just delivering clean power, and then those rates will get adjusted in the future. So by the newspapers highlighting this, it's bringing it, you know, I think they said that it looked like junk mail that came out, and then I saw a thing coming from the Clean Power people saying, okay. Admittedly, there are some things that could be improved on that, and the second flyer that goes out will make it a little easier to understand and maybe look a little less like junk mail.
Right, yeah.
But the very fact that we're having these discussions lets people know. And I think in Ojai, we're a community that pays a lot of attention to this and is very supportive, but there are questions that still need to be answered, and we'll just kind of keep working it until it gets done. But I think that it's a great blend of private market, being able to transition to this clean power, and for all of us to still have a choice. We don't have to do it if we don't want to, but if we see the value in it, which I hope most of us do and can afford to help out, not just being altruistic, but helping your grandchildren. I want to be able to say, at least at my household, when they ask, what did you do when this problem was brought to your attention? I say, okay, we pitched in. So anyway, Michelle, I appreciate all the work you do on this.
Thank you.
And I hope by continuing to make these presentations and the mailers that everybody will realize that they do have the rights, and it's a simple phone call if you don't have a computer or using the computer to make whatever individual choice you want to make.
Right.
Anything else that we?
One quick question. Are things settled with the PUC on the regulations? Or is that still up in the air?
Yeah, that's ongoing in terms of the exit fee and then the issue with the...
The ongoing struggle between...
SCE is $972 million.
Right, the ongoing...
Yeah, million dollar, close to billion dollar.
Okay, so that's something to still pay attention to.
Yeah. But that won't affect our current rates.
Okay.
Because that was built in, like, the forecasting, built-in kind of worst-case scenario, so that won't affect the percentages that I just shared with you. That's, those are very conservative estimates that we were working with.
Thank you.
We might have a public comment?
Yeah, yeah. And speaking of our friends in the newspaper business, come on up, Bob.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yeah.
Hi, Bob Daddy. I was kind of shocked when I saw that editorial, but that was the Ventura County Star, so, you know, they're capable of anything, what can I say? A couple of things that I would like you to explore, because I'm really going to hold your feet to the fire this year on transparency. We present things without saying anything. So when we say nonprofit, which of the 501(c) departments of the Internal Revenue Service Code is this particular entity? To say there's a nonprofit is one of sixteen choices, plus the 501(c), which is charitable. So if we take a look at the affiliation, one of our council people with the Chamber of Commerce, that's a 501(c) seven. If we take a look at Rotary, that's a 501(c) and a 501(c) four. So when we say this is a JUA and a nonprofit, we could use some more specificity, couldn't we? The other thing is, again, we have that $972 million. Some of us never opt in for the electronic meters with the SoCal Edison, so I have no idea what the heck's going to happen with that. So that would be kind of nice to throw in. The last thing is, somebody has to oversight this. I went to many battles. We have council here, went to many battles. We have at least a couple of councils that went to bat for us in San Francisco with the PUC and determinations of increased rates. Who is the oversight on this? Who is going to grant the continued increase? Who is going to be our protector? Who is going to be the regulators? They're going to take a look at this and determine what's reasonable. And I'm not saying that, don't do this. I called, as quick as a wink, I think about ninety or ninety-five percent of the people in Ojai are just going to get a different color bill, and they're going to be fine, and they're going to go on, and a couple people might look at the mix. They answer the phone very quickly. You don't have to wait on the line. It's well-serviced, so that'll be easy. But again, we need to understand the JUA nonprofit coordination, because that's a different type of function. You know, we had Steve Peace, who just cut our throat. He wrote the energy bill for California about fifteen years ago, and Enron picked our bones clean, because we didn't have anybody watching. That was a single bill where we had 100% of the senators, 100% of the assembly, and a governor all voted yes on a miserable bill, and who's Steve Peace? He produced a cult production movie, Killer Green Tomatoes. So, you know, when we have somebody like that writing laws for us in California and we get fleeced by Enron, we deserve it. So I would appreciate if you could follow up and give us some information on, again, the JUA, the nonprofit, and then who the oversight on this is. What is, who regulates? How do you apply? I know the PUC well. I have no idea how rate increases are going to be adjusted. And since there's a 40% advantage where they don't pay federal tax, state tax, local tax, or any bonds, like every other utility that's for profit in California, what are the projections for them passing through all those savings on to us? What is their projection? Two years out, five years out? Because I know they've got initial startup cost and scale, but it would be kind of nice to know what those projections are. Thank you.
I will stay in touch with you personally to get answers to those questions. They're well-stated. Okay. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, James. Is there any? Okay, let's...
We have ten minutes till time's certain.
Right. And you keep me honest on that. Okay, let's do the, should we get the consent agenda taken care of?
I'll move approval of all items except item L.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any objection? If not, so ordered. Okay, item L, Bill.
Yes, I just want to point out that the purpose of the attendance reports is for council to execute its responsibility to the community with respect to the performance of the commissions. That's solely the responsibility of the mayor and the council in terms of people's attendance and, you know, are they putting in the commitment that we expect. And then along those lines, there's also, we had the discussion in our joint meeting this evening about the needs to perhaps look at, at least under Planning Commission, some text amendment issues. And so rather than getting into a debate on that right now, and unless the city attorney stops me, I would like to make a motion that we include on the agenda at the next meeting, a consideration of status for individual commissioner membership, where we can talk about the receive-and-file information. And also, we have a discussion of possible text amendments to Municipal Code Sections 10, 1.01, which is the Planning Commission created, and the 10.1, 02 terms.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I'll say.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion on that?
No.
If not, do we need, we don't need a roll call, do we? Just, so ordered, we're done. Okay, thanks, Bill. We are going to go to item number five and get that one out of the way, and that is on committee assignments. So I guess we start with City of Ojai Boards, the Audit and Budget Committee. I currently serve on that and would very much like to stay on it. I don't know if anybody else wishes to.
I'm for that.
We, I'm sorry.
Do you want to do them individually, or do you want to just?
Up to you. I was just going to express my preference if we're taking turns on that, but go ahead. Yeah, I have no objection to you.
Okay, we can both be on it if you're...
What was that? I'm sorry.
Oh, the Budget Committee.
You were serving on that by yourself.
Right.
Did you want any help, or?
I'd be delighted to have you join us.
Okay, I'll be happy to join. Yes.
Okay. Ojai Valley Base Boards. We have the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency, which I am currently the city's representative. And, Bill, are you the alternate?
Well, the alternate used to be the pro tem. So it would be Souza this year would be the alternate. And if Souza didn't want to do it, I'd like to put Ryan on it.
Yeah, I agree.
His background would flow.
That's kind of like a misnomer. It was only because I was pro tem at one point, it didn't get corrected.
Yeah, let's put Ryan on it.
Let's put Ryan on it.
Yeah, I have a kinship with the Community Facilities District.
We all agreed?
Yes.
All right. You be the man, Ryan.
You're the alternate.
Okay. Ojai Unified School District?
I was it last year.
No?
Yeah, liaison to it.
Do we have...
Does anyone else want that? All right, Dan, I'll stick with it.
Okay. Ojai Valley Sanitary District, is that you, Bill, right now?
Right now, Randy is liaison, and I'm the alternate. Do you want to?
No, you can go ahead and have that.
Want to switch that?
Yeah, you made more of those than I did.
Okay.
Okay. Not quite sure about this next one and how it fits in. The Valley Green Coal issue, I know, Souza, you've been, just because of your being part of the originator of that, I believe, you are liaison to it.
I want to stay, stay as liaison.
Well, that's fine. The only reason I raise the question is that we don't have the Casitas Municipal Water District on here, which I'd like to add, and have somebody from the council take the responsibility to attend their meetings.
I agree.
Okay. Does anybody specifically like to do it?
Well, first, let's deal with the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, and Souza wants that, I say we leave that. Getting back to the, getting back to Casitas, the concern I have is, we have an elected official that represents the community, and that's Russ Baggerly. I don't necessarily know why this, why we need to have a liaison when we have one on the board, and why we can't get Mr. Baggerly to commit to coming to a council session once a month and let him be our liaison.
Well...
Unless you...
Okay, my response to that would be that, one, I think that he would come and do that if we, you know, I think we should, you brought that up before, I think we should push for that. But Mr. Baggerly represents a district that does not co-terminate with the City of Ojai, so he's, this is a little bit like the school board. The school board boundaries are well beyond the city limits, and yet we have a liaison for that. So that's the only reason I bring it up, is, and, you know, maybe we can even rotate, but somebody, I think, should be attending. I know you have done it, Bill, and I have done it, but...
What time?
Usually, what, every other Wednesday, or?
Wednesday, 3:00 PM.
Wednesday in the afternoon, right?
Yeah.
Which Wednesday is it?
I think it's the...
Once a month, I think the...
Second or fourth or something?
Because I have something in the first Wednesday.
They have one tomorrow, maybe tomorrow. Is it the first Wednesday, though?
I can't go tomorrow, the gas company's coming.
That'd be the second Wednesday.
Second, yeah.
Okay, I'll go if there's an alternate. I'll do as many meetings as I can.
Okay, I'll back you up.
Okay.
Okay. County and regional boards, we've got the Joint Powers Insurance Authority.
Mayor?
Yeah, I'm currently doing that if somebody else would like to. If not, I'll stay with it. The City Selection Committee, that is made up of the mayor, so...
Should be the mayor.
It has to be the mayor.
Okay, so that's Economic Development and Collaborative, I think. Bill, do you do that right now?
I'd like to stay with that. I kind of committed to it.
Okay. Bill, does anybody want to join Bill as an alternate on that?
I can be the alternate on that.
Really? Okay. Gold Coast Transit?
I'm happy to continue doing that. I know that was, I know that's vacant now.
Well, you know, it's interesting. Well, I don't know if anybody else wants to.
They don't need a new name there, you know, so...
I've been briefed on the current status of what they're doing, by the way.
The only thing is, I was the alternate on that, and I was, I kind of wanted to move up on it.
Yeah.
Right, and I'd like to give up VCOG to Ryan, if he'd be willing to do that. Ventura County Governments.
Well, are you going to continue on? Are you Ventura County Transportation as well?
So they kind of go hand in hand.
Okay. It's fine, Randy.
And then Ryan, you'll be the alternate on that?
Yeah.
I don't, the only thing I don't know is, I don't know when, what's the VCOG schedule?
VCOG is actually this Thursday at 5:00.
Yeah, because Thursday, depending on what Thursday it is, I believe the OBGMA meetings are Thursday at 5:00, too.
These are every three months.
It just says monthly. Oh, wait, I'm looking.
It's every three months. Not a lot of VCOG meetings. Would it be a good way to introduce yourself to the community?
That's code for you probably don't want to do it.
I was going to say, you're selling something, don't you think?
Like political speak to me.
Nothing gets over...
Get a dinner out of it, Ryan.
The only, the only problem I have is that it is, it's at the same 5:00 Thursdays as the OBGMA meets.
If I'm reading the report correctly, if I may jump in, OBGMA meets on the last Thursday of the month, while Gold Coast Transit, pardon me, VCOG meets on the third Thursday, so there may not be a conflict.
Oh, I see, it's in the description. Okay, that's fine.
He took your excuse away, Ryan. That was not nice of him, was it? Okay, so Animal Services, is that...
I'll stay, I will stay, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else want to? Do we have an alternate on that, or is that just?
No, I never miss. It's one of my favorite meetings.
Okay. Souza's got the Animal Services. Okay.
There is an alternate name, though, Mr. Mayor.
Oh.
Yeah, currently, it's the Mayor Pro Tem for animal regulation.
And they have, sometimes they have trouble getting a quorum, so I never miss.
Okay, well, see, the Mayor Pro Tem is the one.
I am the...
Oh, I'm, excuse me, I was thinking of the former mayor.
My duplicate will come.
The existing mayor.
Okay. Are you caucusing?
Yeah.
Yeah. We've, on the Animal Control, the alternate, Randy, you, you don't have to do anything. Souza says she never misses.
So she goes to them all the time, and yeah, I'll be her alternate.
Okay, the Transportation Commission, and that's you?
Yeah.
Okay, Randy. Regional Sand?
I'd really like to continue with that. They have a lot of turnover, they need some continuity.
That's right. You were the big cheese down there, weren't you, last year?
Isn't that strange?
Yeah, it is. No, I meant. Okay, so, then we go to what?
Oh, real quickly, Mayor, I just want to let everyone know. I attended the, with Mayor Johnson, the city selection committee meetings and I've been appointed to the Air Pollution Control Board.
Good. Thank you for doing that.
Mr. Johnson, Mayor Johnson is on the Association of Water Agencies.
It's wonderful.
Did you get all his name changed?
Okay.
They like seeing that.
Are we done? Are we done?
Mr. Mayor, if I could provide one quick clarification, I just checked the Casitas website and their board meetings are the second and fourth Wednesdays of each month at 3:00 P.M., so they meet twice a month.
I can do that.
Okay.
Second and fourth.
Correct.
Except for I can't do tomorrow because the gas company's coming.
It's 8:00.
Okay.
Mayor, the sanitation district was Bill and who's the backup?
Who's the current?
I thought we were going to switch.
Who, Ventura Regional Sanitation District?
No, I'm going to stay with Regional Sanitation District.
Right, that's what we're talking.
Yeah, that right now you are the alternate. You want to stay there or somebody else?
Yeah, I can do that.
I make all those meetings too.
Okay. Is there anything? Okay.
Got it.
Okay, is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any objection? So ordered. We're done. Okay, good.
Good job, Josh.
Ah, and it's to be witching now. Right on 8:00.
Here we go, man.
A well-oiled machine, Mr. Mayor. Good job.
Okay, we are now to public comments, so. Okay, I have Bill Miley and with Chief Freihoff on deck. Is Bill still here? He left.
Bill left?
He had all the fun he could stand, okay.
He came to the planning commission. Yeah.
Okay, the chief, and we've got the librarian on deck. Ron, you back there? Okay.
All right, well, mayor, council, boss, the community, so you notice we have some rain on the forecast and I just want to get people prepared for what may be coming. So last year, when we were in year zero of the Thomas Fire, right after the fire happened, our threshold for debris flow was a half an inch rain an hour. In that, we would be looking at doing evacuations. Because the survey that was done by the National Weather Service, they came up with our county geologists and walked their hillsides. They say we're in year one of recovery, which is great, which now requires a three quarters of an inch of rain an hour for evacuations. Now, what we did last year was we did, really did surgical strikes on our evacuations because we only had the Thomas Fire burn scar to worry about. That's changed. We now have a hill and woolsey burn scars for the county and the Office of Emergency Services that we work with to determine where we're going to do evacuations at are not going to be as inclined to look at specific areas. So if we feel that there's a danger, we're not going to wait till the last minute to evacuate. We're going to give ample notice and probably take a more broad approach to doing evacuation so that we don't forget anybody or don't leave anybody in harm's way. So our approach now will be looking at the areas holistically with the limited resources we have based on the burn scars for our whole county and make sure that we're getting people out and notified as soon as possible if they're in a danger area. But if you're watching the news and you see that there's a big storm coming and there's more than a three quarters of an inch of rain an hour, you don't have to wait for us to evacuate you. You may leave on your own if you choose. So if you think it's dangerous, please leave. If you're inclined to stay, then that's up to you. If we do mandatory evacuations, once again, you don't have to leave if it's mandatory, but that's obviously something we're strongly encouraging because we may not be able to get back to you if we actually have a landslide. Plus, if we have other disasters we're going to be dealing with, we're not going to retreat to areas that we've already evacuated. So I just want to be, have everybody aware and also make sure you sign up on VC Alert to get the notifications.
I had a question on that. I haven't seen debris flow alerts on VC Alert. Like when PCH closed Ventura County, I didn't see a VC Alert on my phone for that.
Yeah, and I didn't get one for that either, but I don't know if I'm signed up in that, I don't think I'm signed up in that zip code. So you can, for the VC Alert, you can sign up that are zip code specific.
Okay.
And you can do that.
I thought I did the whole county, but I probably didn't.
By texting, the phone number to text would be 888-777. And that's true for every law enforcement agency that's using VC Alert or a system similar, right? It's, or NICS, I guess, is that, 888-777, and you type in the subject line, your zip code. And so it can be the zip code of where you work, where you live, your family's house or whatever, and you'll receive those notifications.
Or your commuting path.
Or your commuting path, so you can get those notifications as well. So, but sign up on VC Alert. If you're a local resident, please sign up so you can receive the notification. You can get it by cell phone, by your home phone, other various means. We want to have, make sure we have redundant ways of getting ahold of you. And then also for looking to see what's happening, vcemergency.com is the website to visit for what the current flood stages are and the Thomas Fire is broken down into different zones and that's all outlined on that map on the vcemergency.com. And lastly, to be prepared, it's readyventuracounty.org. So if you go to Ready Ventura County, you can learn about all the different hazards that we face here in Ventura County so that you compare your family for any disasters that we may face.
Mayor, I have a question. So the emergency's called and it's an emergency evacuation. Are we telling people in those instances or in those areas to head to flat ground, to head to the high school, to leave town? What are we actually telling these people to do?
So when they get the evacuation notice, we're going to have, once we decide we're going to do a mandatory, we've already worked with Red Cross to determine what shelter location we're going to send them to. We don't establish shelter locations until we do a mandatory evacuation. If it's a cautionary evacuation, then people just use, can use their good judgment of knowing where the storm's at, where, and like you said, get to high ground, knowing that you could get stranded, right? If the lower ground is flooded, obviously, or get out of the area altogether where you think that the flooding is going to exist. But if we're going to do a mandatory evacuation, we will have our plan already in place with Red Cross and then depending on where that threat comes from, we'll determine where we direct people to.
Chief, if we, if year zero was one inch per hour and we're near one now and it's three quarters, is that anticipated to stay at that three quarter inch threshold until December, the anniversary? And then will it get reassessed or does it always go down a quarter of an inch like that?
It's a, it's, well, it's going up. So we started at a half an inch, now we're at three quarters of an inch because we're waiting for more rain, right? And I, in December again or thereabouts, I think this year we did it in, I think it was September when I went out with the geologists and the Office of Emergency Services where they were able to look at, to see what our growth was. And, and yeah, the threshold will change. I don't know how, by how much, right? I'm, I'm not a geologist, so I couldn't tell you exactly what our comfort level is, but I know it's better than half an inch and I don't think last year we had, but one storm that reached that half an inch of rain an hour to trigger the evacuations. One thing to be aware of also is when you're watching the news, if they say there's thunder showers or thunderstorms, that's really the great unknown, is if there's a thunderstorm, it can drop a lot of water in a very short period of time. That may not be, be able to be forecasted. So if you are watching the news and you see thunderstorms are coming, then you want to be on extra alert that we might have a problem. And as you know, the Ojai Valley, we have, we're surrounded by hillsides that slide routinely, so we can get stuck here in the valley very easily. You know, don't find yourself on the RNS grade or the 150 during the time of a downpour because that's where the boulders are coming down at.
Okay.
Does the forecast indicate you this next storm? Do we have an idea of the intensity or the?
Nothing yet. So as the storm gets closer, I've noticed that it keeps changing, saying it's going to be raining for four days straight. Now it's a day and a half that we may be getting rain. But as we get closer towards the end of the week, around Thursday, I expect that if there's going to be enough of a rain threshold, that we'll do a conference call. If not, then there'll be an email that'll be sent out that I'll share with staff. They can put it up on the website saying that the rain expected for this storm is not going to rise to the threshold of evacuation. So, you know, just be aware.
Sure.
You know, we, we can't always predict the future, right? So we're going to do our best to help and, but if you feel unsafe and you feel like you need to evacuate, by all means, you can do that without our, without us telling you.
Great.
And Mayor, just in the same discussion, or if you want to, we could do it later, but can the city manager maybe contribute as to what we're doing right now presently in stormwater protection for the community right now? Are we cleaning grates? Are we, you know, what are we doing right now in preparation in the event of a large rainfall next week?
Sure, yeah. Public Works handles that and of course, they, they are assigned when we have large storms. They are out making sure that our drains are being cleared. They also do some pre-p patrol when we know we have large storms coming just to make sure that the potential weak spots are already addressed. You know, make sure that everything is cleared out before the storm hits here. We also will assign additional staff during the storm or put additional staff on standby so that, you know, depending on the severity of the event, we can either get them in here quickly or already have them here to be able to deploy. And, and I wasn't sure if your question went so far as to what we've been doing in terms of our.
Yes.
In terms of our work with, for example, like with, to actually work in terms of the mitigation of the hillsides, that would be a better question for Mr. Grant to answer if he would like. I could certainly have Mr. Grant come up and he can give us a quick summary on where we are with that and the efforts that we worked with, with the NRCS and all that. Mr. Grant?
Right, yeah, we did, last year, you might recall, we had an NRCS grant that we went up and cleared the primary channels up above the city. So that'd be the Fox Canyon break up at the top of Signal. You know, when you're up there at the beginning of the trailhead of Shelf Road, all that channel to the side was cleared. We worked with the county and they put in those big debris bowler dams that are, when you go up Fox Canyon, up Shelf Road, right where that new trailhead is, the Valley View Preserve, there's two banks of bowlers up at the top there. And then, trying to think of down below, there's another bowler arrangement where that channel flows down and right at the top of North Montgomery, there's another bowler arrangement there too.
Right, Daly Park has flooded twice in the 25 years I've been here. And has, there's a big stormwater catchment in the southeast corner of the park. And again, my concern is in a heavy rain. Are we, have we cleaned that out? Are we ready for any water, any debris running down that canyon?
Absolutely too, and that one, I guess, we're calling the daily drainage. We went upstream and we had an NRCS grant that we cleared all that channel upstream, all the way up Shelf Road. So we cleared that, but also in the park itself, we clarified an old channel that was an overflow. So it kicks out onto White Oak instead of going to that drainage inlet that's in the southeast corner. We also put in some bowlers in the creek that have, break up and hold debris before they clog that inlet that is right there. And so quite a few things there, as well as they even paid for K-Rail. If we see a real heavy storm, we can put K-Rail out on White Oak that will, if it ever did hit that overflow channel heavily, you can help direct it down to, I think it's Drown that it connects to, right?
Thank you, Greg. Hey, Ron, come on down and Lenny, you're next.
All right. Thank you so much. Good evening, members of council. My name is Ron Solorsano. I am the regional librarian for the Ojai Valley. And I wanted to share with you all really quickly two things, a special program that we have going on at the library. Over the last month, we've been rolling it out. And then I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the events we have coming up this month. To begin with the program, it's called Zip Books. Now, in general, customers at the Ojai Library have the benefit of requesting items that are owned by any library branch within the Ventura County Library. There are 12 branches total. And if any of them has the book you're looking for, you can request it to come in. Within a few days, it's usually at the library, ready for you to pick up. What Zip Books does is it augments our existing interlibrary loan system, which is where we get books from other systems outside the county, things that we don't have, they're maybe a little more rare. And what Zip Books does is it gives you the option to place a request online via our website for the title. You check our catalog. If you don't have it, you can put this request into a form on our website along with your information and your address. And what'll happen is the book will be purchased and sent to your home. So it's something that, just as another option for you, hopefully gets that request fulfilled a little bit quicker. You get the item with a little note. It says this request was filled through Zip Books, has a little bit of library information. It asks you to bring it back to the library within three weeks when you're done with it. At that point, we will take the book in and either add it to our collection or forward it on to the county system to see if any of our other branches need it. So Zip Books, it's very exciting. If you have any questions or you want to try it out, give us a call at the library or visit our website, www.vencolibrary.org. As far as events in January, we're coming back with a bang. We had a little bit of a quiet time during the holidays. But this coming week, we have a couple of things going on. We have a workshop presentation next Tuesday on January 15th. It's going to be at noon. It's called Mapping Your Successful Midlife Career Reinvention. So that's something that you might want to check out if you're interested.
What's midnight?
Right up my alley.
What day is that?
I encourage anyone who's curious to come on by. And then on that Thursday, this is January 17th, we're going to be welcoming back the folks from Opera Santa Barbara. They're going to be giving a noontime concert there at the library. And then later in the month, on Saturday, January 26th, we're going to have a poetry reading by local poet Jeff Castal and then followed by another one of the Women's International League for Peace and Freedom's film screenings and discussions. So those will be on Saturday, January 26th. And all of this is, of course, in addition to our normal programming, which includes lots of offerings at this point, such as the Shakespeare Salon on the first and third Mondays, knitting clubs for adults on Mondays, and then actually there's a youth knitting group on Sundays as well. Ukulele club meets on Wednesdays, pause for reading where children can read to therapy dogs Wednesdays and Thursdays. A lot going on. Reach out to us at the library and if you have any questions, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Okay, Lenny, you're up and Tina, you're next.
Good evening. Leonard Clay, 412 North Fulton Street. Commissioner Blatch, I missed seeing your dad on the council, but I can't imagine anybody better to take your place than you. Blatch, Blatch number two. The reason I'm here tonight is a quality of life issue. And that's motorcycle noise. I think we've done a pretty good job of reducing the noise from leaf blowers, but the motorcycles are getting worse. It's been a problem forever. And what finally got me to come out here were two incidents. One, a week ago Sunday, I was at a matinee performance at the Art Center, a one-woman show, so it's real intimate. And there were bikes outside for, revving for 20, 30 minutes, literally. And then a week ago, sometime during the week, maybe Tuesday night or Wednesday night, 2:00 in the morning, I happened to be up and there was a bike going up and down Ojai Avenue that any, anybody living anywhere in the Ojai Valley who was awake would, could not, could not not hear. I know there are laws. I know that they're a little tricky to enforce because I looked it up online today. But there are laws and, and some of the bikes are just so blatant in their flaunting of not only the law, but they're flaunting of the right of the people of Ojai to have some level of quiet. And I'm curious as to whether anyone's ever been ticketed in the last five or 10 years for a muffler violation? And if not, why not? And perhaps you all could put it on the, on the agenda at some point for discussion and see if it's anybody other than me that minds the motorcycles without mufflers or with modified mufflers. And in addition to the motorcycles now, people with big trucks, you know, the, I don't know, Ram 2000s or whatever they are, have, have, have taken to modifying their mufflers as well. And it rattles, rattles the walls and it's absurd and unfed everyone. So thank you.
Thank you, Lenny.
Mayor Johnson, can I ask the chief on something? Isn't there a new law that was passed by the legislature that's about to go into effect, strengthening your enforcement capability for modified mufflers and noise?
Not that I have read, but it wouldn't surprise me, right? But as noted, it's very difficult to determine just audibly whether or not it's in violation. So for us to make a stop, we have to have probable cause to make a stop and in that time, we can investigate further. And so have people been cited for it before? Yeah, I've cited people for having modified exhaust and was on a motorcycle. And when the guy questioned me as to how I could prove it, I said, well, there's a sticker on your muffler that says this is not California legal. I said, you forgot to take the sticker off, so, you know, I'm not, I'm no rocket scientist, but I can figure that out. So anyway, so it is, it is, I understand the nuisance of it at 100% and it's something that I will remind our officers that, to pay particular attention to it. Most motorcycles that are California compliant don't have that rattle noise when they come off the line. Those are add-ons almost always.
Okay, Tina? And Deborah, you're next.
Hi, my name is Tina Brumand and I'm a resident on Creek Road and have talked to a number of people about traffic and safety. What I'm here today to do is to request to be put on a future agenda for an Ojai City Council meeting where we can kind of talk in broader ways about what we're experiencing right now on Creek Road. Just since November 28th, we've had three rollover car accidents, three. So we had on November 28th, we had a rollover car accident that was right after Thanksgiving time. That was at Encino. It involved two cars, both of them rolled on their sides. On, let's see, December 24th, which was a Friday, not that long ago, a couple of weekends ago, we also had another rollover on Kenowa and Tiowa in that area. And then just Monday of this week that we're having now, we had another rollover accident that was down near the Watkins and that end of town Monday morning. So we're, I know I've spoken with Chief Freihoff, I've talked with you. Sousa has accompanied myself and another neighbor down to the county of Ventura. But we have a whole litany of problems that are contributing to the problem in terms of traffic, volume, speed, trucks, deliveries to Ojai Valley Inn of giant trucks, moving trucks, tourists, bicycle riders. We have a whole litany of problems right now and it's showing itself to us very clearly through the eight deer that were killed this season through the Sheriff's Department, having to augment their vehicles to put new things on them. But the three accidents recently, it's crazy at this point. It is a literal freeway. I grew up in Ojai. I've spent a lot of time on Creek Road. It was not like this three years ago. It was not the traffic volume, the traffic speed, the dangerous drivers. It was not like this. And we need to, as a group with city of Ojai, county of Ventura and the Oakview MAC, we need to look at what are the factors that are contributing to putting people into this situation where they're speeding down Creek Road? I know what it is, or what I at least believe that it is because I live and breathe it every day. I was present the day that Adon Laura died. I've lived on Creek Road. I grew up in Ojai. I grew up in the Rice Road track when we did not have those stop signs at Camille and Alvaria. And they were put in because people were using Rice Road as a speedway. So we need the help of the city of Ojai to really work with the county of Ventura to do something meaningful to make a change. But this, this mentality that we're just going to keep it as an open racetrack way while we're going to narrow and put Maricopa Highway on a road diet and Oakview on a road diet and not even study the effects of Creek Road, that those two proposed changes, I don't think so much Maricopa Highway is going to have an effect on Creek Road, but certainly putting Oakview on a road diet. And while I know that's not your area, this is a problem that's significant. Three rollover accidents in 35 days roughly, eight deers that have died, numerous other things, a lack of us being able to use our properties the way that we have been, less use of bicyclists, horseback riders, all of that stuff. There's reasons for all of that and it's because Caltrans is doing their job and is putting slow, stop signs through Oakview. That helps, but it's pushing everyone to Creek Road and it, we need help. We need something to help us, please.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, Suzie.
I brought my Creek Road folder.
Thank you.
There's more at home. And I'm planning to ask at the end of the meeting that this be put on the agenda, but it's my understanding that you're getting ready to do, that you can do a presentation, an organized presentation with a PowerPoint.
Correct.
Yeah.
We would like to come and bring kind of a more in-depth look at what we believe that the contributing factors are. There's a group of ladies that live in the Kenowa track, older ladies. They've lived in Ojai for 40 years. They meet every Thursday as a group, so Ramona Andrews and I, who is one of my neighbors. They meet every Thursday as a group, so Ramona Andrews and I, who is one of my neighbors, we've been really involved in meeting with that group of ladies. The problem that those ladies have is those ladies are pulling out from Kenowa and Tiowa, and as they pull out to turn left or right, they're getting side swiped almost because people are coming over into that side so that they aren't being passed. And so those ladies are getting almost their front end of their car ripped off. And in addition to these three accidents, we also had like mystery accident that was sitting there around Thanksgiving time at Encino for three days with a black car that had front-end damage, and it was never reported to CHP. We checked. So we have a bunch of issues going on right now, and I know that there's problems with how the county can deal with it, but we've also been told that the county can do what they need to do. We can't expect Sheriff's Department to patrol it enough. We just can't.
Okay, so it sounds like we're going to have this on the agenda in two weeks?
Yes.
And presentations as a guideline are generally, you know, 10 minutes or less?
Sure.
So if you want to put something together that fits into that, we'd be happy to.
We additionally have letters that all of our neighbors are going to be sending in to y'all. So we do have letters as well.
Can you be ready in two weeks?
Yes.
Okay, we can verify if we, we can do that.
I don't know if this is an option, but I would hope that maybe penning a letter from the county or the city may help with this. One of the issues I thought about in this same problem, and I completely agree, is that a lot of people, and I don't know how many are local versus are people from out of town, but the various apps on everybody's smartphones are pushing people down Creek Road. And if there was a way to reach out to Google or Apple or any of the companies who have some say in that, I don't know if they have a policy of saying, "Hey, we don't care. It's just whatever the fastest way is is what we tell people to do," or if they would take into consideration a county or a municipality saying, "Hey, wait a minute. Can you maybe help us because this is causing a dangerous situation?"
Well, and I think it's a couple of things, right? I mean, I do believe that that's.
We should actually take this up as part of the.
I just really wanted to suggest it so when there is a presentation, it's part of.
It's a component of the issue that we've identified, yes.
Do we have one question?
I don't have, I agree with your concerns and hear your concerns 100%, but I just have something I want to ask council is the reality, this is a county problem, not necessarily our city problem. So my concern is that we're going to be taking up time discussing something that has, the majority of the jurisdiction is in the county. So as much as I'd like to hear more from you and see that, and I'm willing to sit through it, I just don't know as a council what we can do in taking the time of our, from our community needs. I just have a concern with that.
I can, we're going to address that at the presentation.
Well, we can talk about that when we want to put it on the agenda later at the end of the meeting. But thank you very much for, Deborah, come on down.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. My name's Deborah Pendry, 309 Riverside Road, Oakview. I'm presently acting executive director for the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, as you might know, while Todd is on medical leave. And we have, we've had two workshops of the five we have planned at the City Demonstration Garden. They've gone very well. So we were appreciative of the community coming out for those. And next at the Demonstration Garden is going to be Saturday, January 12th, where we're going to come and organize our first workday, community workday at the garden. They'll be fixing irrigation, pruning, pathway maintenance, and things of that nature. So again, Saturday, January 12th, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., the City Demonstration Garden behind City Hall there, so we hope you'll come out for that. And Tara Saylor, who is our member and project manager for the Demonstration Garden, that's apparently her birthday, so she's got something really cool planned for that day, too, in conjunction with that. So join us there.
It's this coming Saturday, at what time?
10:00 a.m.
10:00 a.m., okay.
12:00. And then next is our annual, I think we're at 12 years now, is our annual e-cycle event. That's where we set up at Nordoff High School, and folks can bring all of their electronics that need to be recycled to us, your old media, floppy disks, what we have, VHS, those are around still, cassette tapes, anything like that. We take old holiday lights, household batteries, small appliances. If it has a cord and fits on your counter, we'll take it. And we're going to add this year, because it's such a popular thing with our community since Ojai Community Bank left, we haven't had it, is the shred event. So we're going to take that on and do it at the same time. We've got a big, huge parking lot. We said, "What the heck, you know, let's give it a shot here." So you can bring your e-waste and your documents to be shredded all on Saturday, January 19th.
This is at Nordoff?
Yeah, Nordoff High School, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And this is because of the great support we get from the City of Ojai, Gold Coast Recycling, Ojai Valley Directory works with us also. So those are the next two things we have coming up, and we'll be back next time to give you the great things coming up after that. So thank you very much. We appreciate the community's support. Mr. Summers, love the outfit.
I'm kind of disappointed that Bill Miley didn't stick around. Anyhow, he emailed me at 12:33 a.m. this morning with the motorcycle noise, and I hear them, and Mr. Clay is right, we all hear them. So I went online like I do every morning early, and I found a really nice device that takes a picture and is triggered by 84 decibels. And we can get these things and put them on the side of the road, and if we can't do anything, at least we can identify who it is. And I could put their picture on the front page of the paper and say, "This is your neighbor that's waking you up at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning." But I really think it's something you concern, because this thing is just erratic. It's just terrible. And if you're looking, Mr. Blatch, Waze and a few of the other directional things are directing people into different areas of the community, and what they're doing is they're, on your smartphone, they're telling you different routes to take. And I think there's one other thing that we're going to leave out, and please include this in your discussion. Creek Road Terminus into the 33150, the grade there, is going to be reconstructed. So they've done tons of studies. They've got traffic studies. They've done all kinds of things. And so please make sure as you're discussing this, you don't leave Caltrans out. They've done a lot of work on this, and they'll be part of your answer.
They've met with Caltrans, so thank you.
Because that project is starting soon, and that will be a little bit of a traffic issue up there. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. That's all the cards I have under the public comment. So we are now to item number two, which is the study session for the California Building Code and Amendments. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Tom Juzwiek, our building official, and I believe James Vega will be giving
Good evening, Mayor, council members. For the last several months, staff's been working with the Building and Fields Board to review the California Building Code. Tonight, we're getting the opportunity to present their efforts to the council and discuss the proposed amendments. I am going to answer any questions that you have about the proposed changes. There are two items that I would like to bring to council's attention. The first one being the BAB is recommending to require a complete re-roof of Class A roofing materials when more than 10% of the existing roof is repaired. The increase would likely, the increase is, excuse me, this increase will likely, that the complete re-roof would require, rather than, this increase increases the likelihood a complete re-roof would be required, rather than simply being a repair of the roof, would likely mean higher costs. Now, I don't necessarily disagree with the, with this amendment. I'm just simply bringing it to council's attention. Where this would be a problem is if somebody put less, installed less than a Class A roof tomorrow on their roof, if they had to repair their roof for 12%, then they would have to re-roof the entire roof to Class A. That's all that's saying. And then the other item I wanted to bring to council's attention for discussion is the International Property Maintenance Code. The International Property Maintenance Code would allow an elevated standard for maintenance of properties and provide clear direction for staff and clarity to public for code enforcement issues. It is a way to streamline enforcement and is, makes it, the property maintenance easier for the public to understand instead of pulling out the health and safety book from California. All right. So by adopting the 2016 Building Code with amendments, the city has a good starting point to begin the 2019 California Building Code adoption, which would begin at the end of this year, around October. Hopefully, we're bringing it back to council in October. Now, with that being said, if there is an amendment that is made or an amendment that would like to be made in the future, at any time we could amend it, we would just have to go through the code adoption process. So council may wish to provide feedback on the recommendations. Staff will incorporate the feedback and proceed with the code adoption process at council's direction. The proposed schedule to bring back the, the item is on page 2 of 2 of the staff report. There are a few things that I would like to highlight, and then I'll be able to answer any of your questions that you may have. So on page 2 of 15, or 2 of 6, 2-6, the refunds, the building official, the way the code reads now for refunds is that the building official could set, establish the refund policy. With the amended code amendments, we are actually setting that policy. So it's written and easy for everybody to understand, so it can't change.
Okay, I'm sorry, I can't find you.
Sorry.
It's Attachment A, page 2 of 15?
Yeah.
2 of 15?
Yep.
2-6 as well.
2 of 6?
2-6.
Okay.
Right?
All right.
Yeah, sorry, that, the page number on the bottom got lost in the table there, so yeah. Attachment A, page 2 of 15, is also page 2-6.
Okay.
And then Attachment A, page 5 of 15, there's actually a change required by the state, and that is Assembly Bill 2913 requires a permit to be valid for 12 months for a residential permit. So therefore, it's, that automatically is going to change. We'll change it in our verbiage, too. So they have 12 months to initiate and call for an inspection before, or request an extension before they can, before we can expire the permit.
And currently, that's what, 180 days?
Yeah, six months.
Commercial doesn't change, that's.
Commercial does not change. And then same thing with the, it's kind of repetitive because throughout, because the building code, the residential code, the mechanical, plumbing, and electrical all have the same sections to start off with. So all the refund policies would be the same, same thing with permits and all that. And then the other thing I would like to note is that most of the amendment, proposed amendments to the Building Code and Residential Code are for fire protection purposes. And that's quite evident once we get into Attachment A, page 13 of 15, where we start talking about roof assemblies and requiring Class A roofs and eliminating wood shake roofs, just as a fire precaution, safety purpose. And then the BAB also recommends, and I'm not opposed to, adding a requirement for a heat sensor in garages, detached or attached. And this would be for a permit, any permit issued with a valuation greater than $500. So those are to be hardwired or plugged in. So the only additional cost there may be an electrical permit to run an outlet if one's not available. And then I'll be able to answer any questions.
Just for clarity, make sure I understand, when we're talking about Class A roof, I did a, just a little bit of looking up research, and you can achieve a Class A rating by either standalone or by assembly?
Correct.
And so this Class A would cover both approaches, either a standalone covering if it qualified or an assembly rating?
So if, the problem is, is if it's a wood shake on top of, if the assembly is.
Yeah, there is a possibility of wood shake still being Class A if it has the fiberglass underlayment, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Now, that is still a concern because it would still not protect your neighbor.
Right, so now, so when we say Class A in here, is it necessary to achieve the intended purpose to say a Class A standalone? Or do we, because right now, it's just Class A could be either standalone or assembly.
Okay.
Right? Is that correct?
Yeah, you, yes, you are correct.
Yeah.
Perhaps a question that may clarify this. Is it the, am I correct that in page, Attachment A, page 13 to 15, the proposal from, I believe, the BAB to delete California Residential Code Section 337.4.3?
Correct.
Which allows for wood shake roofs to be fire retardant?
Correct.
Does deleting that provision exclude Class A roofs that are assemblies that contain wood shake? Is that correct?
Yes, because, yeah, because it was discussed with the BAB that if they, if they're achieving a Class A roof by applying a product, then the maintenance of that product.
Right, exactly.
Would then, over time, dissipate.
Right.
Exactly.
It still allows, for example, a metal roof with the right kind of underlayment?
Correct.
For assembly rating?
Correct.
I agree. I just wanted to make sure we didn't have an interesting loophole here.
No.
You know?
The BAB was very, very.
They seem to have spent a lot of time on this, yeah.
We did, but we were very thorough.
Okay. And one other quick question, I don't want to, because in time, on the, on going from 50 to 10%?
Correct.
There's two aspects to that. One is it means that if there's a casualty loss and you're insured, that would kick in insurance covering, the entire roof replacement, is my understanding, if you're going from 50 to 10%.
I, I, I'm building code, I don't know.
Well, we have an insurance person in here that might be able to answer that. I think that's one point I wanted to make, is that.
Right.
Right now, I think generally, the insurance claims are going to be looking at staying, being code compliant. And so if we, one of the advantages, if we have casualties and it's 10%, or a tree falls on your roof and you're 10%, and you're covered by your insurance, and they'll pay for a whole new roof.
Correct.
Gets you to Class A, which is kind of the interest of the insurance company, anyway. Whereas if we stay at 50%, that may not happen, is my understanding. And so it's really an issue for someone who's not insured in a casualty, is my understanding.
And that's what I would assess. Now, again, I'm not opposed to it. I think it's a good idea. I'm just bringing that information to your attention.
But the last comment is that you're basically, good quality fiberglass shingle roofs, fiberglass shingles are Class A?
Not all.
But I mean, you're a quality, three tab, fiberglass, a good, there are plenty of quality regular shingles that are fiberglass-type shingles that meet the Class A requirements. are fiberglass-type shingles that are, meet the Class A requirements, but you're right, not all.
Right.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Thank you.
Randy? So first of all, can you explain a Class A to everyone watching and in the room?
So, Class A versus a Class C determines how long it will withstand a brick sitting on top of it for a certain amount of time. So, and so, that heat being applied to it to get to the underlayment, to start a fire, is what they're looking at. So a Class A is the highest resistance, and the Class C would be a lower resistance.
Okay, so can you give us some examples of existing roofs here in Ojai? What would be an A and what would be a C?
The easiest one is most comp, most comp shingles, which are the asphalt shingles that you see on your standard house, are Class A. And then, a Class C, the, is typically a wood, wood roof shingle, but there are composite, and so, just looking at it, you're not going to be able to tell if a composition shingle is Class A or Class C. That's all dependent on, at the installation time, when the inspector goes out there to verify the product.
So, and then the, the second question from the 10 to 50 percent. If I'm required to replace my roof after 10 percent, do you think that I'm going to actually go through the process of pulling the permit and doing that? Or do you think that we're going to have more people look at, well, this is a, a tree fell on my roof and I've got to replace, you know, 500 feet or 400 feet, and it's a little bit over that 10 percent? Now I'm going to have to re-roof my whole roof, so I'm looking at, let's say, the cost of, of a roof, can you give us an idea of a 2,000 square foot roof, what it would cost to put in?
Off the top of my head, no, because...
Those are $100 a square foot, or is it $200 a square foot?
Uh, we, we do it off of valuation, so they, whatever they're quoted is what we go off of. And so, it, it...
You hear what I'm trying to say is?
Yes.
I'm trying to say is, are we creating, are we going to write an ordinance that's going to create an environment where more people don't comply because of the cost? Or do we want to write an ordinance that seems to make sense at that 10 percent or maybe 20 percent? How did we arrive, how did we go from 10 percent to 50 percent? Why not 25 percent? Why not 30 percent? How, how did we arrive at 50?
It was, it was 50.
It was 50 now.
Now it's going down to 10. Thank you.
Yeah. So, the, it was derived from the Beverly Hills ordinance, and that's where the suggestion came from, through the BAB, is through the Beverly Hills ordinance, is that to get rid of the lower quality fire resistance, then we can have, move on and have Class A, more Class A roofs. Now, to answer your question about, well, we have 12 percent damage to the roof and it's a Class C, now that would only apply to a Class C, existing Class C roof. If it's a Class A roof existing, then they wouldn't have to re-roof the whole thing, unless it's at 50 percent.
Right.
Okay. And then, the, the insurance companies typically require that a permit is pulled also, and then we also have code enforcement that goes around.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any other questions before we, I've got a couple of cards here from public comment. Ray Powers, is Ray still with us?
Yeah.
Ray left, okay. Then we have Wayne Maynard. Wayne, come on down.
Do I have three minutes? Wayne Maynard, resident of Ojai. And I went through the document, and I've got some concerns on some of the issues. I guess the first one I'll hit, since it's, nobody's really talked too much about it, is the heat detectors in the garages. I went and looked at the, first of all, my concern is justification for it, and second is the feasibility of how well it's actually going to work. Okay. With regards to the, the reasoning behind it, I just went and looked at the National Fire Protection Association Home Structure Fire Report, just done in 2017, and the area of origin of fires in residences, the most is in kitchens, 33 percent, and garages is 3 percent. Very low percentage of origin started in garages. So what's the reason? The second issue with, with what they're proposing, is I went and looked at UL 521, which is the standard that's being referenced, and that standard is titled "Heat Detectors for Fire Protection Signaling Systems." Signaling system typically is a fire alarm system, has a control panel, that has input devices from detectors, that then the panel then looks at it and then sends out an alarm to, to the alerting systems. Don't think it's the appropriate standard to referencing for just a single standalone What are the installation standards? How many heat detectors do you put in? If you've got a 500 square foot garage, you put in one, if you have a 2,000 square foot garage, do you put in one or four? There's, there's standards for that, but this, we're writing our own standards, which really don't make a lot of sense, I don't think, especially when you can power it with a plug that you can just unplug and disable, the smoke detector. And then, who's going to hear it? Detached garage, 20 feet from the residence, the thing goes off, who's going to hear it? It's not interconnected. It just doesn't really make a lot of sense that, that this has really been fully, fully thought through, and I think it just should be eliminated. I think the roof replacement at 10 percent is excessive. Person puts in a Class B roof and gets a tree falling on it and you've got to replace your whole roof, I think that's an excessive requirement. The Class A, I think, is good for residential, I think it might be a little bit over restrictive for commercial downtown areas, where perhaps a Class B roof would be acceptable. And I guess the question I had is with regards to what the final determination was for Some of the early stuff I saw, the BAB was working on, was they were going to reduce the, the... Maybe, maybe just explain to me how it's going to work now, on the footings for the residences. So, those are my comments.
Mayor Johnson? Yeah, Bill?
Did you have an alternative suggestions to 10 percent?
I would just not do it right now, we've got a, we've got another year to go before, in less than a year, we're going to be adopting the next code, I think maybe a little more time to kind of evaluate.
So you're, I just wondered if you had an alternative suggestion? Okay, thanks.
Mr. Maynard, I see you're wearing a fire shirt, can you give us your background a little bit?
Sure. I am a retired fire captain from the Ventura County Fire Department for 36 years. I spent 20 years of my career in fire prevention, I've been on national committees writing fire codes and building code standards that have been adopted by the state of California.
Thank you.
So let's go back to this 10 percent. A number of Southern California communities said, "We're in this consistent, constant fire war, and we're going to have it forever, and it's time really to get rid of shake roof." And so, in the city, our current code is Class C. You want to know what the difference was, Randy? I've said this three times to council, I'll say it one more time. A Class A roof will withstand two fire clay bricks, seven pounds apiece, 14 pounds, that's two bricks, on a Class A roof for two hours before combustion. A Class C roof, ember the size of a nickel, will combust in 15 minutes. And we're arguing over this? You think the people in Paradise would be having this discussion? Now, when we talk about putting in a plug-in alarm in a garage, in February, when that house went down on Correa, when we've had the fire up on Blanche, when we've had a number of fires, I'm not really worried about those individuals, we need to start worrying about our neighbors. We need to start worrying about the collateral damage, we need to start worrying about the fires we get with inside. And so what I would say is this, taking a look at the 30,000 homes we lost this last year, in California, just a couple of wildfires, I think if you've got a $20 plug-in heat alarm, we can take all of the advantages we can get, and when it comes to Class A roof, if it's over 10 percent, and that's the code, and they have to remove the roof, and it is one of these Class Cs, then that's part of every policy except for fare plans sold in the California, in the state of California, every homeowner's policy, that's mandated by the Department of Insurance. Garmendy did that after the 92 fire in Malibu. So, when we have the tree fall and we have squares, and you're talking about squares, Randy, where I have a windstorm, and I have a windstorm right next to Senior Canyon, the first house closest to Senior Canyon Reservoir, and it blows off, you know, it costs $32,000 for 2,000 square foot roof, and that was a Class C roof. That was a rolled roof, it came off in sheets. When we had that ember cast come over, we had bare wood on that roof, and we got valley roofing over there really quick, and they, they did a good job. So, what I would say is, we're getting rid of most of the shake roofs, we need to continue to get rid of the shake roofs, and anything you can do, where I was frustrated, is I had a tree fall on a house at the stop sign going up signal, I asked for help from the city on their code enforcement, they couldn't give us a code enforcement letter, so we couldn't pay for all the rest of that roof that needed to get replaced, we couldn't pay for it under insurance, we would have gladly. So if you have the code enforcement where we need to upgrade, and we've thrown a lot of other things in there too, but what we do with the insurance when we have these staggeringly giant trees fall on a roof, we're going to go in and ask for a permit for the roof. Tom knows, I've called him up, I've said, "I've got so-and-so, we've got a roof on the, on the house," and, you know, there it is, because we're going to pay for all that collateral damage, we want to make sure that they've got a good roof, we want to make sure they're in code, permitted, compliant. So, you know, we, we've got, we're, we're partners in this, we don't want to lose this community, we want to do everything we can to make this as hard as we can. And I think by the few roofs that we have that are still shake, those will go away, they will blow off, we will have a tree fall on them, and it's not going to be that expensive. Is it going to be as expensive to allow those people to slide as to lose a community when we've got a 60 mile an hour windstorm, and we prayed the last time that the wind direction shifted, and that's what saved us? I don't want to depend on that one, so, we, we need to harden it down. Thank you.
Mayor Johnson, a quick question.
What, down here? Yeah, I just, again, it seems to, this is what I'm hearing, we want to remove shake roofs in Ojai. Then why don't we say that? Why don't we just make it pure and simple? If you're going to remodel your home, scrap this 10 percent crap, and let's tell you that we're no longer going to allow shake roofs in our community. Why is this so difficult? Why do we have to pins and needles it? Why do we got to jump around and go 10 percent, 5 percent, 50 percent? If we don't want shake, let's say that, and let's make that part of our ordinance, that's where I'm at on this. I don't, you know, I don't want to dilly-dally with percentage, let's, if we don't want them, if we don't need them, if they're a, a complete fire hazard, let's remove them.
I think it has to do...
I'm all for that, but what happened to...
I think it has to do with the legalities of, of, of how that happens, and if you have an existing roof, you can't make someone replace it, whereas if there's a casualty loss, this allows the insurance to pay for it. Is that the basic?
Kind of, we've asked, we've asked, and we've recommended, and we've tried for two years, to get something before the city council to do exactly what Pasadena's done. What Pasadena said is, "We're a fire-prone area, and you have five years to remove all shake roofs within the community." I have sent that to the building department and the other ones 20 times, "I'll send it all to you again." And what they said is, is, "We're tired of losing a portion of our city, it's time to stop this." And so, they went ahead and said, "You have five years to do it, if anything happens in the meantime, Class A. After that period of time, no more, no more roofs under Class A." And they, they went ahead, and, and here's the exception, and I sent out this email to a number of council people. Mills Act, Heritage Home, and a few other designated homes are exempt, and they're just going to be exempt.
Right.
So I had somebody build a brand-new home up on, on Foothill with wood, and it's a Mills Act home, so it was exempt. So, that's just the way that is.
And then I had just one more question, Mayor, regarding the sensor in the garage, so how did that come about? If it's never been a part of any of our existing ordinances, or in our building codes passed, how did this get thrown in?
We have, there's, I don't want to plug a name, but we have some pretty good, we, we now have the carbon monoxide sensors that we have everywhere, we need them. Well, we have those in the garage, and they're plugged in, and they're allowed, and it's okay. Well, you can get these things that have a heat sensor, and what it says, if we get a 30-degree spike in a couple of minutes or a minute, it, the alarm will go off. The reason for the heat alarm is, it won't go off as a smoke alarm when somebody fires up an engine or fires up something else, and you get exhaust, and you get other types of particulates that set off regular smoke alarms, this is by heat, you can get them, they're 20, 30 bucks. Again, it would have saved the people that were on Correa in February, that sat in that house while that fire burned for over a half an hour in the garage, inside the house, and they didn't know it was on fire. Their neighbors finally came and banged on the door. So, you know, I'll take, I, I got one in my garage, I bought one for my kids, had them plug them in. It's like, for 20 bucks, if I can save a life, or if I can save damage for 20 bucks, I'm not talking about sprinkling the whole house, I'm talking about a simple plug-in. So, that, that's up to you folks, because, again, fire department says we have limited resources, we need the help we need, we need everything we can do to help us, and this seems like a very inexpensive thing. And if only 3 percent of all the homes in Ojai went, that's 15 homes. If we could prevent three, 15 homes a year from burning up because we had these little plug-in alarms, I think that would be worth it, anyhow.
And what would trigger the installation of these, or the requirement?
A plug.
No, I said, what would trigger it, though? Not the, what, the alarm system, but would say that you had to do it?
When they do a remodel of the property of more than $500. Okay, so they don't do a remodel, then they're not going to be required.
Okay.
Okay.
Other questions?
I have a question. Has an effort been made to educate people? Do people know, know this about their roof? I mean, maybe that's a very naive question, but, and what percentage, how many, and I thought I heard that you can't tell whether it's a Class A or a Class C roof from the out, you can't just tell by driving by?
You can't if it's a shake roof, but if it's a composition...
We can't if, we can't if, a, a, a shake roof can be a Class A roof for a few years, and then the fire retardant bleaches out and it comes out, and then it's over, and then it reverts back. We have a beautiful home on the east side of the street, just below the bike path on Montgomery, beautiful home. The entire home's probably got 100,000 exterior shake shingles on it, and of course, we know that's a fireman's relative. And then on the other side of the street, we built four new homes, just below, beautiful homes, Craftsman Homes, some other nice homes, and we built those things. Those things are going to be flaming frisbees with the ember cast, and we have a different thought process these days. This thing about a 10-foot clearance and 100-foot care, when they have a 2,000-foot spread for an ember cast, we need to rethink exactly what we're doing. I mean, the results in Santa Rosa and Paradise shows what we're thinking, and what's happening are two different animals, this is an entirely different monster now. And we need to start thinking about everything we can think about, and we need to fire-harden. And then one, please, a last request before you let planning commission take on fences, hedges, and shrubs. Please get the fire department involved, because they have some incredibly important findings and things that have evolved, and I think that we need some direct help in that to assist our planning commissioners with some different thoughts. So I, I would, I would ask that, that you please involve them in that discussion.
Well, while I appreciate Bob's knowledge and all the time and effort he's put into this, could we have the building official come up here and be responding to our questions?
Sure.
Okay.
And as he's walking up, if I could offer one further point of information?
Yes.
Thank you. Beverly Hills is another city that adopted an ordinance requiring removal of existing Class C and B roofs and replacement with Class A roofs. Notably, they adopted it, oh, in the early 2000s with a five-year timeframe, when the five years came up, they gave another five years. When the five years came up, they gave another five years. And we're still leaving that second five-year period. So they didn't have the political will to truly impose it. But it did result in some removal of Class B and C roofs, reflecting the high level of turnover in that wealthy community.
Has that issue ever been discussed by the council before? I mean, is that something that's been, does anybody, Steve, do you know, or anybody else know?
Not before.
No, no, it hasn't come up.
Okay. I just wanted to let you, do we have any people that wanted to speak? And then I'd like to have a couple more questions with the building official regarding-
I don't have any more cards, if that's what you're asking.
Okay. All right, so can you clarify the foundation requirements here?
Yeah. So, it was originally proposed, as we were going through the code adoption, to allow for a twenty-seven inch deep footing. Now, what that means is, anybody can install a twenty-seven inch deep footing and not have to do engineering or anything like that. There are expansive soils throughout Ventura County, and so if you have a deepened footing, that would help minimize cracking and damage to the slab. The Building Appeals Board has opted not to use that and use just the standard building code as the defining design criteria.
So, so if I build, if I have someone build me a home, and we use the twelve-inch footing requirement, which I believe is what's in here-
Correct.
Correct. And during an earthquake, a room collapses, a footing, you know, dissolves, and someone dies. Who's responsible now for not accepting the Uniform Building Code at twenty-seven inches versus-
It's not, it's not the, it's not the building code that we would be adopting. It's a Ventura County local amendment that other cities have adopted.
The twelve inches, the twelve inches is the Uniform Building-
Twelve inches is the minimum building code.
So, we're changing, I just wanna be clear, and maybe you guys can help me out with this. The, if the, if the standard is twenty-seven inches in-
No, it's twelve.
Standard's twelve.
Standard's twelve.
Correct. The twenty-seven inches would been, because of expansive soils in, throughout the county, the county has derived, has said that if you put in a twenty-seven inch footing, then you would not need any additional engineering for that footing.
It's over and above state code.
It's above state code. So then, you would also, you would, because it's greater than state code, you can allow that. The, the standard now, the building code is twelve inches. Unless expansive soils exist, then they would have to do a soils report identifying the expansive soils, and then the footing may change based on soil characteristics.
Anyhow.
Exactly.
So another, another option is to have an option of, if something comes to you as the building official, and right now, the state code is twelve inches are demonstrated expansive soils, then you have to have an engineering report. The option would be, "I don't wanna do a soil engineering report. It's cheaper for me just to put a twenty-seven inch in."
Correct.
And that is something that's not allowed now that we could allow?
We could, yes.
Okay.
And in the minister, and in the ministerial process of constructing a home, am I required to do a soils report?
If requested by the building official, then you would be required.
How would you request that?
If we went out there and there was clay soil, like a lot of, say, it rained, and there was a lot of water just sitting on the site, then we would request it. From just experience and knowledge of-
So it's arbitrary?
Unfortunately.
The decision would be guided by the standard regarding the quality of the soil-
Correct.
-and made on an individualized basis, applying that standard to the facts of the application. The city can never make an arbitrary decision for the record.
Okay. That's, that's, that's nice legalese for arbitrary.
But it is capricious, right, Matt? But it is capricious, right?
I'm just trying to say that, that you're not requiring any, any soils engineers to look at it. You're not requiring any scientific studies to make that determination. You're kicking the top of the soil or observing the top of the soil puddling. I get that.
It's based on my experience and knowledge, or the inspector's experience of knowledge, and then bringing that to me.
What's the current depth standard? I know this is the, on the adopted code, it's twelve, but before that, was it twelve as well?
It's twelve, yeah.
Now that I've had clarification on it, can I make a comment on my opinion on that?
Yeah, quickly.
Okay. My opinion, if I, if I come into the city, and I have to hire an architect to draw my plans, and he puts twelve-inch foundation footings in that's compliant with the State Building Code, and it goes to the plan check, and the plan checker approves it, and nobody's, and I'm not required to do a soils report, okay? And then, I get a big rainstorm, and the soil expands, and lifts my footing up out of the soil, I'd be rather upset, okay? I think it's a better approach to amend the building code to say, like Ventura County does, you need the twenty-seven inch, whatever those standards are. And if you don't wanna do that, then go hire a soils engineer to do a report and come up with a design for you. And so you've got your choice. So you're protected either way. And I think that that's the better approach to do it, rather than to accept the twelve-inch in this expansive soils that we have. If you look at our safety element, it's, expansive soils are covered in our safety element. It's an issue that the city needs to evaluate in their code adoption.
Just a clarifying question on that. The problem that I see is that that's twenty-seven inch for any foundation for any building permit, no matter how small the building.
Correct.
So you could have a small outbuilding. I believe the, the limit for non-permitted outbuildings right now is a hundred and twenty square feet?
I think so.
So let's say you have a two-hundred-square-foot storage building that you wanna build. That's a, you know, if we, if we just had mandatory twenty-seven inch, then you're talking about a twenty-seven inch foundation for a hundred and eighty-square-foot storage building.
So then, to address that, then I would make an exception that would be applied to the U-occupancies, or, you know, those kind of lower, lower house, lower existing occupancies.
We enforce that on board at a hundred and sixty square feet. For a share in this discussion.
There is, not necessarily gonna disagree with Mr. Bader on his assessment of the twenty-seven inch also. However, the, as far as the, the two-hundred-square-foot-
Unoccupied outbuilding, let's say.
Right. In this day and age of compliance units, a two-hundred-square-foot shed could then become a compliance-
Could turn into a living unit, I know.
So, it, it kind of, you know, converting a garage-
Yeah.
-is allowed now, you know, so.
Do you have an estimate? I mean, if, if, on a two-hundred-square-foot or an ADU, an eight-hundred-square-foot ADU, if, what's the cost difference of having to go from twelve to twenty-seven inches on the footing?
Double.
Double what? Double a hundred thousand?
Well, you gotta, you gotta dig-
It could be triple, but I would say start off with double.
Yeah, you gotta dig twice as deep.
Yeah.
And you gotta spend twice as much in concrete.
Those materials. Right. And not gonna double the whole project, though, right?
No, it's gonna, it's just gonna double the, the foundation cost.
Foundation cost, right. But we-
Other questions of the building manager? Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, where does that put us, Mr. City Manager?
So, we're ready at this point. If council wants to give us direction in terms of any changes that you'd wanna see, or if not, we could, we would come back per the schedule at the February twelfth meeting for the introduction of the ordinance that would carry forward the changes. But we're happy to answer any, any further questions or clarifications, or to receive direction from council at this point.
Johnson, I just wanna, first of all, just say, you know, it's so easy to be critical. I really wanna compliment the amount of work that's gotten us to this point with the BAB and the building official. A lot of work, a lot of study. And you notice, and I just, before we get into things that we may not like, most of it, we all like. I think most of it makes a lot of sense. I think the goals were very, were very good. And I'll get into my opinions later, but I just wanted to start out by saying thank you very much for all the effort. It's a real contribution on a, on a difficult subject, so, while we get into the details.
On the footing issue, is this, is the footing issue a fire safety issue, or is it strictly earthquake and soil expansion issue? How frequently is this issue? I mean, is this something that we've seen problems with? And, I mean, has our building inspector seen a lot of these soil expansion issues that we need to address this?
It's, right. It's not a seismic, it's not a seismic issue. But in the event of an earthquake, there, there, there are some stability that could occur. However, the, okay, backtrack, sorry. Can you repeat the question?
Well, I mean, is it, is it foundation cracks? I mean, what are we seeing that is the impetus for us to have a problem in our valley? Because obviously, it's expansive soils, but not everywhere in the county has adopted this.
Correct. So, most of the concrete cracks, everyone understands that. It's how badly it cracks. I've gone through several garages that have cracks in them, and they're quite substantial. And then, you know, when people start tearing up their, their flooring, and then, you know, when they're doing their remodels, there's substantial cracking. Sometimes, you know, you have to ask for an engineer to come and look at the cracking. And is there, is there a repair for it? Or is a repair needed? Then an engineer will give me a letter for that.
But had those foundations been twenty-seven instead of twelve inches, you believe that that would've not had the crack situation from the expansive soil?
I'm not saying that it wouldn't crack, but I, it is believed that it would be less of a cracking situation because of the expansive soils.
And which, which cities in the county have adopted this and which haven't? It's just, I know the county has. It says some cities have, but are there, is there a city or is there a soil situation that's more analogous to Ojai that they've adopted it, and they had some rationale for it, or?
I know Camarillo has adopted it. Moore Park, Moore Park has adopted it also. And then, obviously, the county.
Now, this may be a ridiculous question, but is there, are one of those cities more analogous in their soil composition to Ojai than other areas in the county? Is there anything that would line us up with them that would make it a good idea for us as well?
It's the same region.
Okay.
I guess we're ready to start deliberating, or? I, I'm just gonna express a couple opinions. I've already expressed my opinion on the foundation. I like, I kinda like the idea of, of the, it seems like it covers the situation of, we stay with the default of twelve unless you see a, a problem, you know, and, but then the prescriptive twenty-seven inch could kick in as an option if they didn't wanna go through a soils engineering. I kinda like that choice thing. Just a thought, I, and please pop up if you think I'm just completely off the wall in terms of whether that's workable or not. Then I have some other opinions.
If it's gonna be an option-
Yeah.
-then we could just have it as an option to start with, too.
And what, the difference would be, the applicant, the property owner, then would have the choice of whether to go to soil engineering's route or the twenty-seven inch route. They have control.
They still, they still could. Because you can opt out of the twenty-seven inch and do a soils report.
Yes. If you didn't want, if you felt like you didn't have to do the twenty-seven-
Correct.
-you could pay for that. But if you didn't wanna pay for that, you could go to the twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Then you don't have to pay for the soils report.
Exactly.
And I kinda like the idea of having the, the property owner have that choice.
Good.
That's my personal opinion. If, if you don't think that's workable, that's my, my opinion. You still stay with the twelve-inch basis, unless you see something, or the building official sees something really problematical, and then they have two options to go. They can get a soil engineer, or they could go with a twenty-seven inch.
That is an option.
You know, just my thought. On the, two more comments, real quick, Mayor.
Real, real quick, though, I wanna, I just wanna clarify, so I understand. If it's under twenty-seven inches, or if they go to twenty-seven inches, no soils report's required. We're okay there. If it's under twenty-seven inches, then is it automatic that the soils report is required?
No.
Or do you call the building official? Building official comes out and says, "You know what? Twelve's fine here. No soils report needed."
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, that's my thought, anyway.
Yeah, I'm supportive of that. I agree.
Unless, unless it, the, the foundation is designed by an engineer, then I have no say in it. It's what the engineer says.
Exactly.
Okay.
My other comment, and I know I'm, I'm struggling with this fifty-to-ten business, but I, I'm more or less persuaded by, first of all, the idea that it does really kick in. Most people have insured homes. Most people have mortgages, and they have to have insurance. Even people that don't have mortgages, they, you know, you're not real smart if you don't. And the, the point is, our role is helping people with the tools to get the kind of quality, you know, insurance claim. And we heard, I, I know I've had this problem where the insurance, their, their hands are tied in terms of doing what they may wanna do anyway, in terms of paying for the whole roof upgrade if we don't have a rule. And so I think that, that in that respect, the ten percent makes sense, and it's not mutually exclusive to having, trying to have a, a, a five-year countdown for disbanding them entirely. That can be also added. But I, I think I'm, you know, given, given the interaction with the insurance aspect, and that very few people are self-insured when it comes to their homes, I think it makes, makes some sense to, to consider this. And we're not talking about, we're talking about pretty standard roofs in terms of asphalt, fiberglass composition, Class A. That's a fairly standard material. So, I, I'm kinda persuaded by the ten percent. And then as far as the heat detectors, I don't know. I don't think it, you know, it's not much money. And I don't see it hurting, although I understand Mr., I understand Wayne's comments. But I just wanted to provide my thoughts before, as we go around robbing here.
Well, I have more to say on it, but, again, I still think that we should attach ourselves to having a period where we wanna remove shake roofs from this community.
I agree.
And I think that we need to figure out how to word that into this. And, and again, I just wanna go back to, I guess, I guess my concern is, is the fact that if someone has a small roof damage, are they gonna skirt the permitting process and just fix it? Or, or are we, you know, I understand, I understand, Bob, your take on this because of your insurance background, but I don't know if all insurances, all insurance companies look at it the same way as State Farm does.
If they ask for money, insurance companies are gonna make them go through the process.
It's a, it's a regulation if-
If they do it at their end of midnight, and nobody knows, and they don't file a complaint, yeah, we won't.
But we, we can help remove the financial burden by having a ten percent rule, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, the, the only, the only downside I will address with that is, I have, I represent a number of fire claims from the Thomas Fire. There are a number of individuals who, believe it or not, own homes, they are uninsured. Number of people that rent, that their landlords didn't carry insurance that covered certain aspects of the, of the situation. I highly doubt that there's a high frequency of that inside the city of Ojai, but it is something that does have a measurable amount of existence. The flip side is that, yes, my understanding is that if an insurance company is required to pay for some repairs, and those repairs have a rule, a law, that says, "Hey, if you fix this amount, you gotta fix the whole thing," the insurance company is required. Now, it may cause your premiums to go up, but the insurance company will be required to, to pay for that, as far as I know.
Well, that's, that's all I'm trying to say, is, is we're trying to create an environment where we, where we achieve compliance versus looking at people trying to skirt it because they can't afford it. So that's all, that's just a question that I have.
Do I understand that that's not mutually exclusive?
No.
That you could be crafted in a way that you could do both?
Yeah.
And then, like Beverly Hills, maybe at five years, we'll see whether or not the frequency of fire and everything else says you gotta do it, no matter whether you want to or not, or we get another extension, so. Okay, further?
I think we're okay on, on that one. I, I think I wanted to go back to the foundation. I do like the, the-
The building official, I'd like to-
Sorry, sorry about that. I just wanna make sure. Matt, would that be a separate ordinance? That should be, right?
It can be structured two ways. There's a separate ordinance or baked into this, given the need to spend a little bit of time drafting, it may make sense to do that as a separate ordinance.
Yeah. Well, we leave it up to them how they wanna bring it back to us.
Yeah. We'll work together.
Right.
Okay.
Um, and so getting back to the, um, uh, the foundation issue, you know, we have a lot of expansive soil here in the valley. So, I would lean more to, in as, in as much foundation work that I do, I don't do housing foundation, do I do, but I do a ton of retaining walls. Um, and this 27-inch for years bothered me, but the reality is, um, it is structurally a better wall, it's better. So, I'd like to see us go to the 27 and with the fallback at 12, with this building, with the building official being able to make that decision, unless engineering is required. There's other things you could tie it into, too, soil movement, you know, instead of square footages of, uh, of building, you could look at how many square feet of, or how many cubic yards of soil are being removed, um, which, so in other words, if I move 100 cubic yards of soil, I'm gonna displace that with 100 cubic yards of concrete. It's pretty, pretty simple math. So, instead of getting caught up in, I've got a 200-square-foot, uh, storage room, you know, um, and I'm 10 by 12, so I could do the math real quick. We could just fall back on how many cubic yards of soil, and if it doesn't fall into that, then it falls back to 12 inches or to 27. That's what I'm throwing out.
How, how does that work?
So...
For us, like a 200-square-foot storage building on a cubic yards of dirt? How does that work?
So, that's what I'm saying, what's the minimum? So, if the building official wants to work with us on this, that's what I'm saying. If it's, if it's a, um, a 200, a 200-square-foot building, let's say, so what is that, 10 by?
10 by 20.
Right, okay. So, you've got, um, uh, you know, I don't wanna get into the math here.
I'm trying to think of how we make it easy to say, you know, because...
Alls I'm trying to say is, that if you just base it on the amount of soil that you're being removed, so in other words, what's the threshold? Is it a thousand-square-foot room addition? Is it an ADU? Is it a 500-square-foot ADU? Or is it a 200-square-foot storage, uh, facility?
It's 120.
Well, I'm ju, no, I'm saying that's the minimum without a permit. I'm talking about with a permit. Anything over 120 has to be permitted.
I guess, I, I was just kinda wanting to leave it where it defaults to 12 unless the building official sees an issue, and then you have a choice of either getting a soil engineering approach or go with the prescriptive 27-inch.
So, we're starting with 27 with the default to 12?
Well, yeah, you're asking to go the other way, where we would default to 27, and the building official basically would then be empowered to provide an exemption.
Right.
That shifts the burden a little bit, you know, from the owner to the building official in terms of discretion. I always liked discretion with the owner, personally.
Right, but it depends on what the owner's motivation is. The building inspector or the engineer is probably a better, uh, opinion, even if it is capricious or whatever the attorney here said or called it, but it's an educated opinion, and who's gonna have the better educated opinion versus, uh, if I'm putting something up and I'm gonna flip it, sell it, then maybe I wanna keep, put as little money into it as possible.
Well, my suggestion still brings the building permit judgment into the mix.
It does, okay.
Yeah, because, because it's, it, the default at 12 unless the building official says, I, we got a problem with those soils when they come in, they apply for the permit, and...
So, the building official could, uh...
Could say, uh, basically say, you, you, no, you can't do 12, there's a problem with that soil. And then you have a choice, you can go the engineering route or you can go the prescriptive 27-inch route.
So, I just have one more thought with that, and, and I need the building official to answer this. So, um, a- again, I'm coming in with a single-story dwelling, and, um, as part of the permitting process, I'm not required to have engineering. Um, and then I, you approve the permit. How often do you actually go out and visit the site prior to approving the permit?
Pr- pr- inspect the site?
So, you don't?
We don't, yeah.
Okay, so you, so you give me the permit, then the first inspection is my footing, and you come out there and you go, oh, my God, you have got expansive soil, I think you need to go back in, we need to do a 27. Um, so alls I'm trying to do is prevent something on the front end from that occurring. Yeah, so help me to, help me to get there.
I, I'm...
Well, I, let me say that.
We're talking theory versus reality, and I, I understand that probably the, the building official's not gonna look at the site before looking at a residential permit.
What, what, what we would hope is that staff would tell them, here's how the process works. If you're gonna choose not to go to 27 inches, then you're gonna have to either accept the, either have to get the building inspector out there early, which may cost you a couple extra bucks, or you're gonna have to wait, build your footing, then the inspector's gonna come out and may change their opinion at that point. But that's the risk you run, but at least you have an option.
Nah, I don't know.
The...
But the... I don't know if I wanna take, I don't know if I want that risk.
If we can get a majority to say default 27 with the ability to basically apply for judgment to generate the site visit to go to 12, I'm okay with that.
I mean, if I'm building a 200-square-foot, uh, storage unit, and I go, this is gonna cost me an extra three grand to do 27 inches, that might be the opportunity where you go, hey, you know what, I'm gonna go with 12, let the building inspector come out and tell me if I'm wrong, and at least I, it was reasonable to save the money. If they'll build an 800-square-foot ADU, it's probably not worth it. But that'll be up to the, the applicant, the builder.
And, you know, for a storage shed, 200-square-foot storage shed? 12-inch footing is fine.
Right.
I mean, you know...
Most of the time.
Yeah, I mean...
Not arbitrarily, ever.
It's not, it's not gonna be happening, so...
Flexibility is all.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, so, Bill, what was your, um, what was your thought on that? Just run this back.
I think Ryan's got a good point. The building official's not out there before granting these permits in the first place, so, much as I hate to say it, I think I might agree with you. I, I think going to a 27 default with the option of requesting the 12
Right.
uh, makes sense.
Right, okay. Then I think I have one more question on, uh, I kept reading it in here is the, um, or is it, um, verify, very high fire hazard severity zones. Can I ask the building official, what are we? What's our classification? Are we one, are we two, are we three regarding very high fire here in Ojai?
Uh, we have the very high fire severity map hanging up in the, uh, lobby, uh, outside the, uh, planning and building, uh, desk. That is the very high fire severity zone. Uh, CalFire does not publish a map for any of the other, um, levels. Uh, what we have effectively done is eliminated all the other levels and made everything be built residentially to that standard, to the high fire severity zone.
Okay, and that was the recommendation of Bab?
Correct.
Okay, and, and so do you want to explain the difference in the cost of materials, um, to a consumer?
So, what it would do is require a protection of eaves, uh, so, uh, to protect an eve, minimize openings, um, on, uh, certain setbacks from a property line or another structure. Require, uh, different materials, higher, uh, fire-resistant materials on the exterior, which then eliminates wood siding and all that kind of stuff. Stucco and, uh, hardy board and other materials would be acceptable. Uh, and then also, um, the types of materials for the, um, glass, um, that, that changed a little bit, including skylights. And then, uh, venting openings, uh, reduces the openings in a vent for your, uh, attic space or, um, crawl space, reduces the, the, the actual hole space.
Into eight to an inch, right?
Yeah.
Yes, to as little as. And then, uh, would then, uh, that's, that's just a quick summary of...
Right, and what about detached, uh, uh, patios, uncovered, or let's say with a lattice top versus a, a cover top?
So, so the lattice top, uh, I mean, the cover top would require a, uh, Class A. Um, I do believe, we have a, uh, one of the appendices, I, I can't think off the top of my head, that is being recommended. It's, uh, for patio covers, and so I do believe in there, it talks about, um, construction in a high fire severity zone. I do believe.
I think it all makes sense, given the nature of ember-blown fire...
Well, I, I agree with that. I like, everything you said regarding the hardening off of structures, I agree with 100%. I'm just concerned about the lot or the parcel that has the ability to put a detached patio, 50 feet from the original structure, and the requirement of, of a, um, higher rate of timber, a fire, you know, a fire retardant timber, um, and the cost required to go to that level.
Yeah.
It's significant. And I was wondering if we had a threshold of 25 feet from an existing, 35 feet? Do we have anything built into ours regarding that?
Uh, not that I recall.
I know the county does, and it's 50 feet.
We could, we could definitely look into that.
Okay. Okay.
So, I, it sounds like we've got some consensus here on some things.
Yeah.
I think we're, we're okay with going to the 10 for now with maybe further work, and then
Yep.
What, on the heat sensor, do we, uh, despite some of the limitations, is, I don't see it doing much harm to require it?
No, I think it's important. I think, in all honesty, there's a lot of situations where if a fire starts in an outbuilding or a garage,
Yeah.
it's not the people inside the building that hear it, it's the neighbors that smell the smoke, it's the neighbors that hear the sound and are available to actually make a difference, so I think it's a...
I had a garage burned down, so it happened.
Yeah, I mean, and you don't even know.
Right.
So, I, so that's what I know is, uh, some anecdotal...
Sounds like we've got more or less consensus on a number of items here.
Yeah, I have to, I'm very impressed. I mean, for all these different modifications, for there to be maybe a general consensus and just a little bit of changes, it's pretty solid.
Yeah, yeah. They did a good job.
Yeah, I have, I have one question, and I don't know if it relates, here I know, did the, uh, issue of, uh, decking come up? You know, decks, uh, but...
Tom, you wanna do that? Didn't we talk about the closed decks where you cook?
Yeah, with, with skirts on them so that there's the, you can't blow in underneath?
The embers don't blow in underneath.
If, if we haven't done it, we need to do it. You can have a deck 18 inches off that's totally open where everything can blow into the house and burn you down. And I thought we had discussed that. If we hadn't discussed that, and you don't need a permit for that deck, as long as it's not 18 inches up. And so, I would kind of... Bill Miley, I wish you were here. I, I wish, I wish we would, I wish we would make a...
We can always add that later on.
Yeah, I wish we would add that in, and then the other thing is, is Mr. Miley, and, and I meant to bring this up, it said, when we put in fences, charge a $5 permit for a fee, just so everybody understands what you can do and how you do it. And so the city has a chance to, like, take a look at it and make sure things are where they're supposed to be. Because there's this misnomer about fences and fire catching and, and, and the difference with hedges, and that's why I want you to get the fire department in.
Stacking firewood up against a wood fence right next to the house.
Of course.
I didn't wanna stretch the thing out, I was just curious.
Of course we do, but yeah, the decks, we, we wanted to have a permit for the decks and have it fully enclosed.
Yeah, I, I would say there's two key things. I don't know how we make sure that this gets addressed later on, but the issue of the decks and the issue of, um, potentially having a time window to get rid of all shingle roofs. I think those two issues, whatever we need to do to make sure we come back to those.
And decking, Tom, isn't it, is it 32 inches versus 18? I, without a permit for a deck, for an attached deck? 30, okay. True thought.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so what do we need to do at this point? Do we need a motion, or is there consensus direction, or what?
Oh, we had one more question. I had one more question. I'm sorry, Mayor, I know we wanted to...
One more last question.
Well, we had, yeah, you know me, I'm good for that, but I just wanted to have a, um, I wanted, uh, Tom to come in and, again, talk about this IPMC. I have a, a note here, it just says, uh, what is it? Uh, what's that stand for?
International Property Maintenance Code.
International. Okay, so you're recommending that we do it, and Bab is strongly opposed to it. Okay, give me some reasons why we should have it.
Well, it, it, what it does is it increases the enforcement, um, capabilities and allowing a higher standard of living. It also allows for the, um, a better understanding of the community when we have to enforce something that it's easier for us to, uh, kind of educate, uh, and, and enforce, uh, the code requirements.
Can you give us some examples?
A hole in a roof. It's going through the Health and Safety Code, is, uh, trying to find, you know, the citations and stuff like that. It's, it's a fairly thick book, whereas if we use the International Property Maintenance Code, it's this thick. And we can easily get to it, get our information, and get that to the public.
In, in fairness, like, after, when you're done, I think we should hear the other side.
Yeah, well, is, is that, is that it? Is that simple?
So, i- i- it's, it's really all about enforcement. And so, when we, uh, as, as code officials need to go out, it's something that we can bring with us and, and carry and, uh, enforce. Whereas the Health and Safety Code, we can't. And, you know, again, if you choose not to adopt it, that's totally fine with me, it's just a discussion.
Well, you gotta be a little stronger about this if you want it. I'm just, uh, you know, I'm just...
He's been around long enough not to do that.
Well, I, I just, I said...
No, I, I would just, again, for, for examples, that's just not a very good example.
My, my opinion is it, it, it's really a separate, whole other matter to discuss, that we don't, we don't have it in front of us to look at, and, but I think in fairness, we ought to hear some of the other side of why there's some issues with it.
Well, um, I don't know, it seems like here in the action, um, key building code issues for council direction, and that's in it, International Property Maintenance Code.
That's, that's from staff, not BAB, yeah.
And not, and not the state of California, it's not been adopted.
It's not required by the state.
And I'll say as well, without even knowing what it says, there's a 0% chance I'm voting to adopt anything without knowing every word in it, and
Exactly.
it doesn't sound like it's absolutely necessary to do.
And...
Staff does not feel it's necessary to have that, to be able to accomplish the, the, the goals of the, you know, be, to be able to make sure, ensure that we have properties that are being maintained. It's just, we feel it would be an easier, more effective tool, but by no means is it necessary or required. Uh, we're not going to, to die, uh, by, by fighting for this, uh, recommendation.
Okay.
Okay. And we still have an unsightly provision someplace, right, to be able to, uh, protect neighbors from, okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, that's, that's, that was one of the questions I was gonna ask, is in this, because it says maintenance, it doesn't say construction. So, in the maintenance, um, aspect of it, would it allow code enforcement to go by and actually drop a letter or a notice on someone's home and say, please remove this car, or, um, please mow your lawn, or please don't wash your car on the draw, on the lawn anymore? Or how do we wanna go about this?
We can do that by targeted code provisions that work for us, rather than a whole thing adopted that has other unintended consequences.
So, are we saying that we wanna have this brought back to us, just so we can just look at it?
We'd have another chance to do it later.
Great, okay.
If we, if it's, you know, the feeling, after Ryan has read it word for word.
Yes, I wanna word for word, I refuse unless I read every word.
Okay, so, uh, how does the city manager feel about notes and as to where, what you put together for the next stage?
Well, I, I, without having a chance to speak with the building official, and I'll guess, I'll see if I can catch his eye, do we feel we have sufficient direction? I think it's been pretty clear in terms of what, what I got from council. Do, is there any, any other matters that we need some clarity on from council tonight? Or do we feel we have enough to be able to do, do our work and come back?
Um, I, I do believe that we do, I just, I think we just have to make sure that we're doing the 27-inch footings, correct? Uh, starting with the 27 and then being reduced?
To fall with an opt-out, uh...
Right.
Okay.
Correct, yeah.
And then, um, we're gonna keep the heat sensors?
Yes.
Yep.
And then there was no other?
Whatever shake.
And then, uh, remove...
Think about a five-year shake countdown, maybe.
Okay.
And a, um, and a, and something back to us on, uh, um, structure, uh, requirements, building structure requirements, um, standalone from an existing house.
For, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Are we done here?
Can we take a, a three-minute break?
Uh, yeah, if we make, we make it short and we can then get on to the, we have two more items to take care of. We're gonna take a, a three-minute break.
You could either require that these, you could allow these uses and make them subject to issuance of a conditional use permit, in other words, they would not be able to have that use in that zone without first obtaining a conditional use permit for the city, or the city could structure the code so that these were permitted uses, so that they would not be able to, so that they would not be required to get a CUP, it would simply be permitted in that zone. Happy to answer any questions, and again, looking for some direction from council to take this to Plan Commission.
Okay, are there any questions of staff, I have a couple of cards from the public that would like to weigh in, I guess.
Would, would like to weigh in?
You can, okay.
I can weigh in, yeah.
Okay, we have Robert Meyer, with Jeff Crowell on deck.
Well, first, thanks for switching those, that makes my evening, your evening goes on the same, but mine's a little better, thank you very much for that. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Robert Meyer, I live at 550 Buckboard, the property is immediately adjacent to the proposed M1 area changes. So, and I am strongly opposed to these changes. My reasons for this are as follows. First of all, I think there are plenty of areas in the city currently permitted for these purposes that are available, I don't see any reason why additional areas at this point need to be permitted. If you go down, up and down Ojai Avenue, there's empty buildings, there's empty property, there's plenty of places if people want to put in places that sell alcohol beverages or put in any kind of lodging establishments. Second reason, I already experienced what I'll call light pollution from that area. My backyard backs up to Bryant Circle, they are grandfathered under the Night of Sky provisions, because they were there before that ordinance went into place, but there's still an awful lot of light there, you add hotels, bars, they're gonna be open later, there's gonna be even more of that, which, again, will probably be, meet all the ordinances, but that doesn't make my life any better. Thirdly, I also experienced some noise level from those, the existing business, they occasionally have some music events, which I can hear very clearly in the Ojai nights, from my property. Again, I'm, you know, I'm not gonna go out there and measure with a, an odometer to figure out how high the decibel ratings are, I think they're well below the current permitted amounts, doesn't make it any less desirable. Again, more of these types of businesses will only bring on more events of that nature, which would make my life undesirable. And finally, you, I'm sure you will, but you need to consider the traffic, you have more vehicles in and out of that area, they're gonna come out on Bryant Street and try to turn, maybe left, onto Ojai Avenue, there's no traffic light there, there's usually quite a bit of traffic up and down Ojai Avenue, that's not an easy place to come out of, I've done that myself. So in conclusion, thirty-plus years ago, the council that sat in this chamber, or, I don't even know if we were here thirty years ago, but anyway, they, they made what to me was a bad decision, to allow a residential, single-family residential zone be immediately adjacent to an industrial zone. That is really in violation of all good urban planning principles, you usually kind of stagger that, you have industrial, light industrial, commercial, multifamily, and you get to final. So, that was a mistake they made then, I encourage this council not to take and make that mistake even worse by allowing these changes.
Thank you very much.
Sir, what intersection are you closest to?
He's on Persimmon Hill.
You're in Persimmon Hill, Buckboard and Persimmon Hill, okay, thank you.
So, there's, there's about seven or eight properties that line either Buckboard or Saddle Lane that are adjacent, that fit that back corner.
Right, thank you.
I won't speak on behalf of Robert, but I, I know Robert, his house is closer to the tennis academy than it is to the caravan, but I'm sure, noise-wise, he's still affected. Light-wise, I'm not sure, but I do know, noise-wise, you, you definitely be affected.
But he's, I, I'm getting the comment that it's intensifying the use, and the nightline.
Yeah, it just takes it up, you know, right now, you know, is it doable? Sure, it's doable, I kind of tune it out, you know, it's kind of like white noise a little bit occasionally, I mean, I hear Littleby Park when the concerts are on there too, depending on the weather.
Right.
But, it's okay.
Right, thank you.
Commander, reject real quick, Mayor, just, we did change the, the, the noise ordinance to accommodate for things like this, if there, if the neighbors are being disturbed by an unreasonable noise, if it's further than fifty feet away, then we can go out and take enforcement action, or at least let them know that there's a complaint, so they can turn it down so we can have harmony in our community, that was the whole point of the ordinance change.
Okay, Jeff, you're up.
Hi, council, Mayor, Chief Captain Freihoff and Mr. Summers, I have a business, of course, on Bryant Circle, I've been involved with the Bryant Circle for over nine years. I have seen more traffic, okay, but Bryant, it's an area that was literally a ghost town six, seven years ago, there was hardly any traffic on it, I have not had any problem with the caravan organization, as a matter of fact, I feel it's a wonderful complement to our environment because it's so unique. Now, there's a difference about alcohol use, there's places that are tasting venues and there are bars where people go from one place to another, to another, and may be involved and in a vehicle and traveling. This is a lodging, this is a place where someone can consume alcohol, and if they want, they can crawl to their trailer, they're not gonna be getting in a car. So I think, as an alcohol venue of giving a conditional use permit, it's certainly a much better opportunity of safe access to do this kind of involvement, it also monetarily makes a big difference, there's restaurants here that have opened up, that have had to get alcohol permits in order to stay viable. I really think that this vintage trailer and this airstream type of concept is unique, Santa Barbara has one, I went to Bisbee, Arizona, and I can't tell you what an enjoyable experience it was, to literally stay in a travel trailer, and they even brought a diner from La Cienica, in the LA, loaded it up, and this is a forty-two person restaurant, and they put it right there in the vintage trailer. So, it is an attraction here, and I think that not having alcohol served in this kind of environment is just, I mean, we allow it in so many other venues, I think this is a safer venue to do it in, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, okay, that's all the cards I have, so-
Question for staff, Mayor.
Just, just, yeah, just-
Chad Hilger's with Caravan Outpost, I just want to respond to the guy that lives in Persimmon Hill, I used to ride dirt bikes fifty years ago, well, I'm fifty, fifty-four now, I used to ride dirt bikes decades ago, when this guy, who complained, where his house is now, it's to be farmland-
Chad, just, just address the council, you know, where it's not a debate-
Sorry, used to be farmland.
Let's not make it personal.
How insulting is that to me?
I know, that, that's just, the topic is on the agenda and not a personal thing, so, okay.
Well, he made it personal to us, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
No, he did not.
I guess, I guess what I'm saying is-
He did not.
This guy's, he's complaining about noise, there used to be manufacturing, there used to be so many things happening in the M1, the city-
I don't think you're helping your case.
The city has chased away so many things, what we're trying to do, is we're trying to survive in a small town, we live in Ojai, we grew up in Ojai, we're trying to do something in Ojai that we can do nicely, and what we're doing is, is not something that is egregious or something that is becoming a nuisance to the neighbors, and if there is something, if he's complaining about something, why didn't he come to us?
Don't make it personal, just talk to us.
What I'm saying is-
Well, I understand what you're saying, but there's more than one issue, it's not just you.
What we want to do to address his comments, we don't want to bring in more traffic to the outpost, what we're doing is, we're just doing something to abate traffic, so people don't have to get in their car and go somewhere else to get something that they're already doing at the outpost.
Right, and if there's a zone change, there will be a public hearing and all that kind of conversation, right now, we're just simply talking about a way possibly of solving a problem.
Thank you.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
Yeah, I have a question for staff when it's appropriate.
Okay, I, I-
I don't want to respond to him, but I do want to respond to the earlier comment about the caravan, if this is about just-
If you're gonna speak, you're gonna have to, yeah, come up and please keep it short and not, we're getting kind of off-topic, right?
If this is solely about the caravan place, that's not what's on the agenda.
Correct.
The agenda is to take that whole area-
Correct.
And rezone it, and that's what I'm against.
Correct, right, yeah.
Mayor Jones, I have a question to staff on that point.
Yes, I do too.
Okay, let's, let's move it to Bill then, okay?
I assume that an option, that's not in the staff report, would be create, for lack of a better word, a overlay zone subset of the, of the large M1 MPD, where the, for example, a CUP allowed use for hotel motel lodge timeshare facility could apply just to that small subset part of the overall zone, that's an option.
It is an option, provided that the subset isn't too small to constitute spot zoning.
I understand.
But it is, and that's the typical model, a lot of cities do that with specific plans, it can also be done with overlay zone, that, that's a doable option, provided it's not one parcel.
For example, the, the, you know, bike trail, that part of the zone from Bike Trail to Ojai Avenue.
Certainly, that could be done as a-
Is large enough, I'm just, I want to throw that out there as an option.
Right, and at the last meeting when this came up, I, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought we also had the option of not dealing with zone changes, merely making a permitted use under a conditional use permit, under very limited circumstances, because the city's already made one decision in this one piece of property, and it is, you know, a-
That's, that's also an option, although, again, that can't be done for a single property, it has to apply for the whole zone or subset thereof.
But, well, but, but under a CUP.
Certainly under a CUP, yes, but it would mean that-
But are we talking about adding more CUPs to expand and add more of these kinds of uses?
There is only one applicant on the table at present, but you, it wouldn't be possible to prohibit others from also applying.
Correct.
Unless you did a subset, either the M1 or some subset thereof.
But the only, may I ask a question?
Yeah, it would open it up to everybody in that zone, all the properties in that zone.
Are, are the subset-
It is not possible to only allow this person to get what he's sought, that's not possible. However, it is possible to do it in a subset that's smaller than the full M1 MPD.
And create a subset geography.
Are there other CUPs in that zone right now?
I believe there are the CUPs, but there are no other CUPs that allow lodging.
Correct.
They're the only one that allows lodging.
It just seems like, I think you're the Pasadena Parade categories, you know, if you narrow it down to people with CUPs, with lodging, who can get a license number seven or whatever it is at the state, then everybody who's in that category, raise your hand, that, it's not like we are deliberately doing it to restrict it to one property, but only one property happens to be in that circumstance, is that, am I way off base?
Well, that can be structured to be more narrow, yes, the only issue is if you had, for example, a, another property that, that had perhaps not lodging, but had some other use that would, could be paired with alcohol sales, but yes, you can make it-
The granola people.
Like, like a gymnasium, or one that's down the street there?
There are some that, there are some yoga studios that now pair alcohol.
That's right, wine and yoga.
But yeah, I mean, you can make it, you can narrow it depending on how you slice and dice it.
Well, my concern is, is that we not, pardon me, let me say this, my concern is that we protect the light manufacturing properties that we have left, and not expand and start turning it into a, you know-
Well, an overlay or subset would do that.
Okay, if, if there's a mechanism for doing it and narrowing it, then, great, okay.
Yeah, it can be done depending on how narrow you want to do it.
But, but what you just said is it's based on the square footage, so that would have to be addressed, you'd have to look at that, because that may not, you can't narrow it to one site specific.
Yeah, that seemed to be more spot zoning than what I was suggesting.
You may encumber some other areas that can do it, that's what I just heard.
Well, and one point that's worth noting in terms of where this might apply, is both delicatessens and restaurant café are allowed permitted uses in the M1 and MPD zones both, so any property in those zones can be turned into a restaurant with just a zoning clearance. If you allowed alcohol sales by CUP, then those could apply for a CUP for alcohol, if you required that to also include lodging, then it would be limited to those that already have allowed lodging, that might be a way to do it, to narrow it, that might be an option.
Well, I just-
Depending on how narrow you want to go.
I just want to say that I, I understand the concern about not shrinking the options, but I think it's, you're, you're literally talking about an area of the M1 MPD as you get on the other side of the bike trail, that, that is close to Ojai Avenue, that does not have, you know, frankly, a lot of, that's not, it's not built up for that purpose right now, and there's land that is, is very underutilized and looking to be redeveloped up there, close to Ojai Avenue, and I just, I just think we ought to think about, it, it's away from Persimmon Hill completely, and we have an installation that is operating, paying transient occupancy tax, and I, I just, you know, it's attractive to me to think about the CUP in a, in a subset of the zone, not the whole zone.
No, I'm not in disagreement with that, right?
Okay, well, I, I'm not entirely clear on this overlay that you're speaking of, I, in my opinion, simply is, is that we have created a particular circumstance, not we, but the city over time.
Yes.
And that it didn't seem like an unreasonable narrowly defined to solve that problem through text amendment or something, without suddenly, you know, and I, if, if they're already permitted uses that would benefit from this, then so I don't see the harm in that, but the idea to, to redevelop the area with hotel motel and stuff may be a great idea for the future, but that seems to me to be a general plan subject, as opposed to what we're doing now, and I thought the last time we talked about this, there was a concern that knowing how long it takes us to get around to doing things and to do a general plan update would, you know, we'd all be long gone before we'd have gotten taken care of, so we were trying to come up with something-
That's, but that's what I'm trying to suggest.
Yeah, that's a correct submission.
I know, until you start talking about all the redevelopment, then you can, then you start making me nervous.
We cannot, what I'm trying to say is, we can't limit it to one parcel.
Right, but we can limit it to a permitted, already-
But we can limit it to a, a very small area.
Already permitted under a conditional use permit, if from what I hear.
So Mayor, that's one way of, of approaching it. The, I think there's another option, and, and I'm not sure on, we'll need the city attorney's advice on this, but if we have an existing facility operating and paying TOT, what kind of text amendment can we make to allow them, as with everyone that pays TOT in this community, to serve alcohol on site? How can we, how can we do it that way? That might be the easier way.
There's two ways to do that. One would be to provide, allow alcohol sales by CUP in the M1 and MPD zones with a footnote calling out that that's only true if the proposed facility has allowed overnight lodging. That would effectively accomplish it only in this property. But of course, if a future property was permitted for lodging, then they would benefit too. And it wouldn't allow the other hotels in the C1 zones to also have alcohol service beyond their CUPs, as there is at least one other hotel in another portion of the city in the C1 zone that has a per CUP, or pardon me, a design of view permit that limits their provision of alcohol, and the council may not wish to expand their allowance for alcohol sales. But could do so limiting it to the M1 MPD zones. That would be a viable option. It might fit the narrow goal here.
Yeah. I think that solves the, the question before us tonight. And then if we want to address hotels, motels, and other businesses in the M1 and the MPD, then we do that at a later date.
Well, we do it as, I would hope we would do it as part of a total.
General plan.
Review of our general plan.
Right.
So as, and.
So we solve a problem and we move the rest of it down the road waiting for the general plan update.
I think we got it. I think we got it.
I think we're clear.
So we can bring that forward to the planning commission.
Yep.
As an ordinance to come back to council, public hearing, planning commission, public hearing here, and we'll look at the sequel compliance as well.
Perfect.
I have, I have a different question that I want to ask. Robert Myers said something about that the, that the light or night, the night light ordinance was grandfathered in? The dark sky ordinance is what I meant to say. That, that doesn't.
We're sort of leaving the topic. Why don't you make a note on that, that we can have the staff.
Yeah, I just want to be clear that, that, that the outpost lodge, the caravan outpost lodge abides by the dark sky ordinance. I just want to find out how that.
We can take a look at that question.
Take a look at that, okay.
It's because it's new versus everything else that's been there for years.
Yeah, I'm just not clear on it.
It's under the provision, okay, let's.
Mayor, I have one more, I have one more question regarding alcohol sales. I ju, just regarding this, what we're trying to achieve here. One, one, some information that we haven't been provided with is the levels through the alcohol and beverage, what's the last word to it?
ABC.
ABC.
Yeah.
Per control, yeah.
And the only reason I ask this is that, you know, I visited a friend back in Tennessee over the holidays, and he had a bar and a restaurant in there, in Nashville, and their alcohol sales were based on the number of food, the ratio of food that they sold. And I was wondering if, if we have anything like that here too. Now, it may not, may not be to this instance, but how do we regulate that or how do we coordinate that with the ABC? Do we know of, Anne?
That's perhaps a broader answer than I can give right now. The ABC has a variety of license types that allow sale with food, sell without food, pure bars versus restaurants and lounge type spaces. There's no direct regulation that matches alcohol limits, sales limits to food quantities. That's not how California regulates it.
Okay, they, they also had one other one that I thought was interesting is the city received all of the taxes on beer and wine sales, and hard alcohol sales went to a different, you know, went to the county or something. I was just wondering.
It's much larger topic, right? We take that up.
Yeah, I was sure we'd like some information on that for a future, for a future, for a future discussion regarding hotels, motels, bars, and establishments that will be serving alcohol. I think it's something that we can, that we need to look at.
Yeah. Okay, can I just say something?
If it's on the topic.
Yeah, it's on the topic.
Because we've got another item that we want.
Yeah, let's just make clear to the public that what we're permitting, the caravan outpost lodge is.
No, we're not doing anything at all. We are, we are trying to create a mechanism by which that decision can be made, I believe.
Okay.
They happen to be the one that brought it up.
But it, there, okay, the mechanism is to sell beer and wine to their guests, but not the public. Is that right?
Yeah, is there a level seven or something, or a class seven, or with a license?
It's defined, I believe that it's, it would be a type, I'm not sure the number, but our, our permit isn't tied to the ABC types at the moment. It would just be alcohol sales onsite consumption.
Correct.
But we, depending on, it could be further structured.
Could we not?
We could do that by CUP or even in the, in the footnote if that was the council's desire. If you want to limit it to solely people staying at the hotel, that can be done.
Trying to make this any broader than necessary to.
Yes.
Address the issue and the fairness.
Yeah.
So yes, the answer.
It would be, it would be nice if you brought back the ABC regulation and provided it in the staff report when it comes back.
Part of the, yes, that's doable.
All right, we'll reference that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, matter concluded. We are now going to item number three, and that's, I believe, is the.
Invasive trees. Correct, invasive trees, right.
Okay. All right, got that done? Okay.
Okay, we're exotic intrusives, I think is what they native plant people call it. Okay.
Mr. Grant, if you could give the report, please.
Good evening. Appreciate you taking this item tonight. Actually, I thought a few of the people in the audience were here for this item, but I guess it was that one you just covered, so that's terrific. Yes, tonight, I guess it was some time ago, the council requested staff return with a invasive plant procedure or policy for the public right of way. So that's what I was addressing tonight. According to the California Advanced Plant Council, which is a recognized authority in the state of California, they've created an advanced, an invasive plant and tree species list, which was attached as exhibit B and is a complete list attached to the administrative report. And we pared that down, talking with arborist in the tree committee, to trees only, and that's the attachment A, which is attached to the report. There is, just to give a feel for the invasive plants, in California alone, they say there's about four thousand two hundred native plants, there's about eighteen hundred non-native in the state, and about two hundred are considered invasive. Like I say, that, that list in A is a tree only ballpark twenty, thirty, those are tree out of the two hundred total. There are no trees in the high rating. That tends to apply more to weeds like the arundodonax and other things. As far as trees go, that are more common, more commonly found in the city, the following are actually on the invasive list. Number one, the pepper trees, the, the Peruvian, which are often called California, and those are considered limit, limited as far as what level invasiveness. The Brazilian, which are, I would say more of the, one of the more common pepper trees seen around the city. It's the red pepper, and it's, it's a moderate.
Because of the hour, can you just, just summarize on what's being recommended, and then we can, through the question and answer.
Sure.
Get into the more detail.
Sure. So that, I guess you'll see in the report then what trees are on the invasive list that are significant. There's a lot of them around the city, there's a lot of them around the state. Peppers, eucalyptus, palms, and all the trees, silk oaks. A lot of those trees, the Mexican fan palms would, I think, were recognized when they reviewed with the tree committee, and also when the California Department, the CAL FIRE Urban Forestry Department reviewed it, they felt there was very limited value for Mexican fan palms. For eucalyptus, it's a more complicated case, they have a lot of benefits, but they, especially in riparian or coastal areas, they can be more invasive. And the Peruvian pepper were also less invasive and not quite an issue, but they can be in streambed areas. So the staff recommended the following invasive species tree policy. Number one, that is highly invasive species to remove all Mexican fan palms as opportunity and budgets allows, especially in or adjacent to riparian areas where seeds spread readily. Number two, remove all CAL IPC listed eucalyptus in riparian areas as opportunity and budget allows. So these are all items on page three of the staff report. Number three, remove any tree listed as CAL IPC if it's moderately, considered moderately invasive. We might see some of those on that list show up periodically for moderate. We might see, for instance, tree heaven can be more aggressive as well as some of the acacias, but they're unusual to see. But we do see quite a bit of the Brazilian pepper as well as the Mexican fan palm. And then periodically review that list for any changes, and I think six and seven were a bit unique, and they're outlined separately in the recommendations to the council, and that is that the Mexican fan palms could be removed on properties adjacent to the city with cost sharing with the city of fifty percent if the seed bank and so on would possibly spread into city properties. And then number seven, the city crews may provide minor invasive sprouting tree removal on properties adjacent to the city property to preemptively eradicate adjacent invasive trees from growing into the city properties.
And those are good recommendations.
Yeah, I think the idea, right, obviously being if we got city property and adjacent, we've got all these Mexican fan palm or invasive seeds dropping all over city property, and we're always fighting them, if we could work with that property owner to eliminate that. So that's the end of the report.
Okay, I'm sorry. Was there discussion of banning approval of anything on the CAL IPC list from any landscaping plan permitted?
I, I think the council requested to only address public right of way, so I didn't go into the private property.
Was, is it no discussion on that?
No, but in our research for other cities and areas, it's not uncommon to, I would say not to necessarily ban, but to recommend against, and I would say for DRP type and commercial, there would be bans for it.
Okay, but I'm, what I'm trying to say is that, to me, that's another aspect of it, is that we're just not going to permit in a landscaping plan anything on the CAL IPC list. It's easy.
Right.
It's an easy, or at least a guideline, as a guideline for deliberation by, guidance for the planning commission on deliberation, that that's part of the guideline. So you wouldn't see an objection to that.
No, I think that's supported, and it's even supported by the CAL FIRE and their urban forestry department, they have a similar kind of support for that.
Mayor and Bill.
Susan, Susan.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to comment on his, on, I think Kathy Nolan brought that up in the planning discussion. That might be something Greg just takes over to planning and have them throw it in the revised landscape ordinance.
Agreed.
It's an easy place to take it to.
Okay, Susan.
Okay, well, on your point three A, where it says if the trees are providing substantial benefits to residents or business, I would like the word, you know, residents, comma, business, commas, and then add wildlife and the ecosystem. And wildlife would include birds, insects, you know, all.
Right, wildlife and ecosystem, right.
I just want to make sure that the wording, whatever wording we end up using, it makes it clear that we don't remove anything simply because it's on that invasive plant list. There has to be, you know, a sound scientific reason, and we need to acknowledge that that list is changing, you know, because the world's changing. And the whole perspective on what's invasive is a matter of debate. You know, there, there may be this authority, the California Invasive Species Advisory Committee, but there are many people in the scientific world and biology that are writing books such as this, it's called The New Wild, While Invasive Species Will Be Nature's Salvation. And then this was recommended to me by Connor Jones, Beyond the War on Invasive Species, A Permaculture Approach to Ecosystem Restoration. So whatever we, policies we adopt, I think we should do that with some sense of humility and, and acknowledge that there's not a, really a final authority. You know, there are some things that it may be clear cut, but that list of trees is very extensive, you know, in my opinion. So I just want to make sure the policies reflect that.
Well, I, I think Susan, this is one of the few times where you and I have a different perspective, because if you, the Invasive Species Council of California is designated by the state of legislature to be the authority.
Yes, I'm, I'm one of those, yeah.
And there are all kinds of, of highly credentialed people on this advisory group, and yes, they are constantly revising and meeting, but that is the scientific authority. I, I, you know, for the state of California. So I don't really, I've not been exposed, and I'll, I'll be happy to look at your citations, but I've not seen scientific dissent from the Invasive Species Council. It includes people like, like the, you know, the conservancy, it includes natural resources council, all those people are on that board of the, and that is the state authority. So I, I, I just, I just take issue with the idea that unless there's some clear rigorous alternative to that scientific authority, that, that that is the designated scientific authority by the state of California. And I, I'm open to, you know, open to persuasion as always, but I just, I haven't seen that. And in terms of the issue of substantial benefits, to me, the issue is substantial exclusive benefits, not just substantial benefits. Because the issue is, are we crowding out a more sustainable type of species in our, in our ecology with the invasive species that could provide the same benefits? And so I, I, I think I would, I would object to your wording unless we also include the word substantial exclusive benefits.
Well, I don't think at this hour we're going to be able to recraft it specifically, but I think the, the sense is, is that the judgment that's being used, because clearly all these things are hedged, saying, subject to time.
Yeah.
And availability of budget, so this isn't imminently, you know, endangering anything, that the judgment to include, you know, the ecological impacts, which I think is basically what we say in our general plan and every.
Right, and, and, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so.
I have one more thing to say, but I'm out of line, Ryan.
Okay.
I just want to, I'm responding, I acknowledge everything you stated, I'm aware of it. I took time, I went to their website, I looked at their credentials, but there's, there is another body of information that is different from that. And, you know, science, how we view the world, it's always changing, and it's good as council members and policymakers do, to be aware of that. I also want to point out that this council recommends the use of glyphosate, which, and I, yes, it's right here, and their, their position on the issue.
Oh, the CAL IPC, okay.
Okay, let's, let's have this through, through the chair and not get turned into a lengthy conversation over insecticides and herbicides. I think you've made a, made a, a good point, that we don't want to just blanketly, on the other hand, as Bill says, the authority right now would lean towards the people that have made that list up, so I think we'd have to have pretty good reason to not do it, but I don't think we're in danger of over, over removing any of these things. If anything, the problem is the exact opposite.
I think the focus here is really, when you're down in a creek or riparian area.
Yeah.
And this, all this clearing we've done below, we're pulling those fan palms and the yuks out, you see the stream starting to flow, it's pulling a lot of water that would have been used for natural habitat. But when you get up into the city, and that's what, I'd like to emphasize that paragraph from the California, the CAL FIRE group, and they really said, hey, Mexican fan palms, absolutely the rest of it, be cautious, but down in riparian habitats, it's more of an issue.
And so that's basically the direction we'll be giving, and then we can bring this back and, Ryan.
The, the question of if the trees are providing substantial benefits to residents or businesses, will that be done through a director's exemption, or would that be a question that came back before planning or council?
Keep in mind, this is all only in public right of way, so it's really always a judgment call. I'm always working, previously, we've always done that with city staff and with individual. We just had a five-year contract approved for a tree work, so we'll be going through in a grid manner on the whole city, so we'll be making those calls. And there was an addition made to that contract where we now list all the invasive trees on that tree inventory as it comes up, so we'll be considering those for removal.
What I would ask is that similar to how planning directors exemptions are getting noticed to the whole council, that before this particular, if we want to call it an exemption, was issued that we would have noticed to the council? And I bring it up because Susan brought up, she touched on it. Ojai is very sensitive to trees, this is a community that's had people literally lock themselves into trees. I would hate to not have at least some, you know, even a modicum of, of review over that decision and not to put you in the crosshairs if you make something a lot with it we might and not to put you in the crosshairs if you make something a lot of that we might have realized was maybe not something that we should have done without more discussion.
So understand that better, are you saying if we do remove an invasive tree that...
No, if you say that, hold on, we're not removing an invasive tree because this has substantial benefits to the residents, the businesses, or the ecosystem, then you'd say, hey, we've made a decision not to remove this particular tree, council, here's why, just so you're aware, we've, we've gone out of our normal right-of-way decision-making and we've said, no, we're keeping this for this particular reason.
I see. I, I do want to imply that, I think under the, under the stream bed area where it's invasive, the intention was to try to use budget when available to do that. We're hitting it hard right now with all this work out back, there's not much room left otherwise in the city. But there are certain areas, for instance, we've been pulling the Mexican fan palms, which are, are competing with a lot of the native live oaks and so on that are suffering, so we've been pulling those. But I think it'd be fairly unusual that we would go after them aggressively.
Yeah, I mean, I'll say, I don't mean to, believe me, I want the autonomy to sit with you to be able to make a decision on which trees are taken in or not. But if you decide to leave something because there is a benefit to the residents or businesses, the reason I think is, if we take out one tree and we don't take out the next one, I would sure like to know what the rationale was so I could explain to someone, hey, if you have a problem with the yuuk that's getting taken out that's in the public right-of-way behind your business, but you like it, or behind your house, but you like it, here's the rationale that we've used in the past. There are some times where we might not take it out, but it's limited to these types of situations.
I just want to make sure I imply that, I think that it'd be more normal not to remove these trees, I think we're going to be limited with budget.
Okay.
And I think you'll find that when we have some of their problematic and they're feeding into a local stream bed area, or for instance, up on Blanche behind the Bank of America, we just put in that long bioswale in, and there's, there's a Mexican fan palm right up the road on private property that keeps feeding all these seeds in there and we keep getting it, all, all kind of Mexican fan palms growing there, we might try to pursue those where we see problems occurring, you know.
I just, I just want to make sure whatever we do, we don't create a gray area.
That's...
So if, if we create this area of, I believe it's enhancing my property and we believe that's not enhancing, and now we're going to go to some form of arbitration over a tree in the public right-of-way, I don't want that discussion. I want the jurisdiction to do what we need to do to preserve the integrity of our community. And so I think we need to look at that when we're addressing this. The other thing is, we need to look at some of these invasive trees, not just in, again, I haven't even had a definition of invasive. Is it root structure, is it water consumption, what are all the degrees of evasiveness that we need to look at when determining this tree? And if there is, can you provide that to us? Because I haven't seen it in, in any of the...
The invasive species council has a definition on the website.
So again, it'd be nice to, to have that presented to us.
Let me ask a question, see if I put a little perspective to, what, is there a rule of thumb on a removal of a fan palm, a Mexican fan palm?
Dollar-wise?
Yeah, dollar-wise.
Ballpark, 1,200, 1,500.
So go through the town and count the number of these you see and the likelihood of us having enough budget to do anything but the fan palms right now, which are the biggest problem.
They're 150 behind the city.
I'm just saying, we've got time to refine this, but, because the fan palm's going to take up probably most of our ability and maybe some eucalyptus if they're in the waterways and they have, what is it, the blue gum or...
Right.
Well, I think, Mayor, I think one other thing that we're trying to address also is, when we're making a decision to prune a tree with our, with our tree budget, if it's on the invasive list, why prune and not remove?
Right.
So again, that's another aspect of what we're trying to achieve. And again, if I'm developing a site and I have a tree in the public right-of-way that I need to mitigate somehow, whether I'm doing a sidewalk enhancement or an approach or something of that nature, you know, again, as a developer, I want something that's definite, I want, I don't want a gray, I don't want to argue with my neighbors, so that...
But, but, but there could, may I say something?
Yes.
There, there are going to be times when it's a gray, because some things are seasonal, there could be birds nesting in the tree, for example, you know, and that has caused a lot of sorrow to people when they see, you know, baby birds flapping on the ground. And, well, I have a, I mean, there are many, I've got many, many concerns about tree removal. You know, most of you know my philosophy and I know, but I respect, there are times when it has to be done, I totally respect that. While I've got your attention, could I just say that, and this is from Renee Roth, that she, and I agree with this, any eucalyptus trees that are cut down, if possible, let them remain on the property where the wood has many beneficial uses, because we were down there over the weekend on Saturday, I took the water workshop, and we were looking at, you know, all the benches are falling apart and there's a whole lot of uses for the wood there. It could be stepping tomes, you know, benches, and stumps to create seeding areas rather than removing the stump. And, you know, it also, you get the drift, yeah.
Mayor, I'll promise to be quick.
Yep.
The more that I study, in particular, the issue of invasive species and in particular, the blue gum eucalyptus species, it, the more my perception has changed. I don't see a beautiful tree anymore. I see a weed, a very tall weed that was put in place by European colonization that has wrecked devastation on the ecology. And to me, that's what the science implies. They were brought in for use to the idea of something that could grow quick and be wood for railroad, railroad ties. It was completely dysfunctional. They were planted by Caltrans to dry out wetlands that we now treasure and want to preserve. They were, you know, they have, they changed the soil chemistry where they grow. Their roots go below the oaks and take water out of, away from neighboring oaks. So what I'm trying to say is, I'm not saying that you should take down a eucalyptus tree with, with, with bird species breeding in it, but to be looking at them as, I think we need to look at our entire ecology and recognize that there were no blue gum eucalyptus.
You're in danger of violating your promise.
Before the 20th century. And I will wind up and just say that I, I just think that we, we need to look at the whole ecological impact of these situations. And, and one other comment, we do have some errando inside city limits, like in Libby Park, and I hope we would get rid of it.
We're working on it.
It's very aggressive, very difficult.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve.
Can I get a clarification, Mayor?
Moved and seconded.
Could I get a clarification before you finalize the vote? Just that, there was an implication there that we will never, we will always remove and not prove, I'm sorry, we will always remove and not prune these invasive trees. And that's not the policy that was laid out there, it was, that would occur in...
I think that's a suggestion that we look at that.
Right.
I would zoom in your, your, your good judgment of managing your budget, of figuring, you know, if this is going to cost me more later, I'd rather spend the money now. I think you even had some of that in the report.
Yeah, or the benefits, right? For instance, we just pruned all the trees in front of Norah High School and their benefit to that area, that's where kids sit out there and, you know, in the shade and throughout the year.
Better with oaks.
There's a lot of benefits to them. Yeah, and, but, we're looking at a plan where we phase in oaks.
I agree.
Right.
Okay, I think you got your answer.
I just didn't want a lot of heat, okay? Should have removed it, not pruned it, okay?
When do you expect, Greg, when do you expect your tree inventory? When do you expect it to be done?
It's in phases as the work is done. It's not a complete inventory upfront. We already have that one with minor changes to it. We're reinventing as we do grid pruning throughout the city.
Okay, so you, you actually have a tree count of the city?
Yes.
Can you, can you provide that when you...
It was attached to the RFP for the maintenance.
Right, but can you attach it to this, bring it back so we can look at it?
Is this coming back?
No.
Are we voting?
I'd be glad to provide that anyways.
The motion is, was I thought, to approve the recommendation. And there are three points to the recommendation, we had a second to it. We have a request for a tree inventory.
Be glad to provide it.
That can be separated, yeah.
Just to clarify, were there, were any of the language changes that were discussed carried in that motion, or is it as it was presented?
Well, I think that's sort of a, kind of like a signing statement.
No, I, I won't.
We approve it as you submitted it, but I think Susan made a good point about being sensitive to it, and Bill made a good point.
I do want the wording wildlife and the ecosystem added to that.
And I've got that noted here, I guess I can...
That's not part of my motion.
With the clerk to take it out.
I wanted to find out.
Okay, then I can't vote for it.
That's, that's, that's what, that's what I'm trying to get clarification on, so...
We need to vote when it does un...
I believe it says written.
As written.
Okay.
As written.
Why, why do you, may I ask why you object to adding wildlife?
Are you going to, if you want to make a motion to amend...
Okay, I make a motion to amend that we add...
Okay, is there a second to the, the language you said you wanted to include? Is there a second to that?
Wildlife and the ecosystem.
I, I will second it.
Okay, so it's moved and seconded, now you, it's something...
I'll say this, I mean, well, if we're going to, I mean, the difference between the two, I don't think ecosystem changed substantially what the rule is, and I think that it gives you more flexibility. It's not a requirement that if there's an ecosystem finding, that you can't take out the tree, but it does give Mr. Grant a little bit more flexibility to say, hey, there's a serious issue, we got animal, we got some extraordinary reason why this tree shouldn't be removed, and I think that situation could apply, and I trust that Greg would do the right thing.
I, I would vote for it if it said substantial exclusive, but not just substantial.
What's that mean, substantial exclusive?
And exclusive. I'm just saying.
That's my point.
Okay. It's moved and seconded, shall we have a vote?
This is on the amendment.
It's on the amendment first.
To the amendment.
The amendment?
Yeah, the amendment first, of course.
Mayor Johnston?
No.
Councilmember Franci, or Mayor Pro Tem Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
No.
Councilmember Wirick?
Now to me, no.
Okay, amendment failed, so we're at the main motion. The main motion is to accept the three recommendations as contained in the staff report, it's been moved and seconded.
Who, who made the motion and who seconded it?
Randy did and I seconded it.
Okay.
R and R.
Councilmember Haney?
Rest in recuperation.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Sorry. Councilmember Wirick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Francina?
I'm, I'm voting no, because I am very aware of the wildlife and that you may not be aware of that exists in some of those high sweeping eucalyptus trees, so I'm voting no.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes. And I think the staff now knows that we are wanting that to be a factor though in, in the judgment of the time of year and what gets, what gets taken.
It seems like there's flexibility there.
Thank you, Greg.
Very good, okay, thank you.
I'll get that.
Treatmentary, too.
Okay, that brings us to what council reports, is that what's next? Yeah, council member reports, Randy, you have anything?
No, they all start tomorrow.
Okay. Ryan, you got anything?
I have no new news on that.
Okay, I got no new news.
In view of the hour, no.
Yeah, okay, thank you, bud.
I just want to, I don't know what I did with my notes, but I do want to say how, that the workshop I took, the water workshop I took on Saturday was excellent.
Good.
And I highly recommend that you attend the next one, it was great.
The only thing I will bring up is that Councilman Wirick and I have had a discussion, I believe we're going to approach Casitas Municipal Water District about forming a subcommittee regarding the spending of the community facilities district money, similar to the Measure J Oversight Committee. Not that this board has any, you know, not that the council has any real say over that, but just to inform everybody so they're aware.
Okay, very good.
Yes.
There's my votes.
Okay, is that city manager's report?
Yes, thank you, just a couple of things. One, I wanted to mention that we received an invitation today from the school district superintendent. I don't know if you'd heard in the news, there was some controversy and some concerns about a very unfortunate incident that had happened at Matilla Hall Junior High School where some students had, had formed a swastika. Anyways, the, the district is obviously very concerned about that and trying to be very responsive. So Monday, January 14th, at 6:00 PM at Matilla Hall Auditorium, the district in partnership with the Anti-Defamation League is holding a community forum to discuss this. I know I've been invited, I think the mayor and members of the council's been invited as well, so just wanted to pass that along. It's Monday at 6 o'clock at the Matilla Hall Auditorium, encourage everybody to anticipate in that. Also wanted to know that I had a visit from county animal control officials recently, they are in the midst, and probably Mayor Pro Tem Francine is probably aware of this, they are trying to figure out, to come up with a plan to replace their aging and outdated animal control facility, which is at Camero Airport, and of course, they're trying to come up with some plans to replace that and trying to find some money to be able to, to replace that facility. But obviously, it's, it's going to be a rather significant issue for the county, and of course, we being the city, we're not completely out of that because obviously they do provide our animal control services. If we don't get our services through them, we would be having to provide those ourselves to some extent. So anyways, just to let you know that I did get an initial presentation from the staff on that, they haven't taken their request to the board of supervisors yet, and again, they, there's a lot of questions in terms of what they're going to do there and how they might possibly fund it. They might even be considering going to a parcel tax or some other, some avenue, but it's rather early in the process on that, so.
Can I ask for clarification on that? You mean, they came to your office?
Yes.
Was it some email or anything?
No, they, they, right.
Can you, can you tell me who it was or email me the names tomorrow?
Sure, I'd be happy to, yeah, I'd be happy to do that. It was the interim director and, and some consultants with the county staff that are helping them with that, but I'll, I'll get you that list.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, city manager, it's appropriate.
Sure. Is that on this topic, or is he...
It's on a question for the city manager.
Yeah, but is it on the top, when he just, okay, we are, when he's finished, then we'll, we'll, do you have anything else, Steve?
Uh, no, those were the only things I, that I was going to announce, other than future agenda items when we get to that.
Okay, go for it, Bill.
Do we have any evolution or timeline for bringing back the local SEQA guidelines, council, of policy approval, because I'm increasingly becoming concerned...
Yes, that is...
...with staff putting burdens on applicants that might be outside what this council feels comfortable with in terms of SEQA requirements?
Yes, that is, that is scheduled to come to council at the February 12th meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I have a, I have a question, not related to that, though. I, I've, I've talked to a number of people in the community, I've received a number of emails, the ATP project, I'm very concerned that we have not set a clear date to the community on when we are finalizing our discussions on it. We've heard January to February, that's the best information I can get, people who've asked me directly, and we still don't have, I think it's imperative that we have a date certain that is, this is the last time we're going to discuss the project, the plans, the public will have input, and it seems to be a floating deadline that I'm concerned about.
Well, I can't tell you when the final decision will be made, but I can tell you that staff is ready to bring the discussion back at the next meeting, January 22nd.
Okay. Can I make a related request? Can you check on, with Greg Rand on that stop sign? Bob Daddy and I are wondering when he's going to put that in.
Sure.
Yeah. I promised Bob I'd ask.
Well, I'd like to approach that same signage. How do I bring it back to council? Because I'm still hearing tons of concerns about it and major complaints in my community, which in four years, if I choose to run again, I'll be completely representing. But right now, they feel like they've been sabotaged and they feel like they've been blindsided by not having a better public discussion regarding that signage. So how can I bring that back to council for another discussion?
Simply this request, future agenda items, as, as is our policy, consensus of the council, or at least two members puts it on...
But is the reconsideration issue as to...
Reconsideration only applies during the meeting at which it's at the issue, it doesn't apply from meeting to meeting to meeting.
And we have the authority, I believe, to undo a stop sign, just as we have to do it.
Council has the authority to undo any decision that's made in the past, with some exceptions related to vested rights and the reality that you can't undo the past.
So do I need a second for that tonight, or how do we want to approach that?
If a second is present, then that can come back to the council at a future agenda.
Is there a second present?
I'll second it.
Great.
I've heard the same thing, I polled a lot of people, I don't have anybody who's supportive of that stop sign. I think it's only fair, I'm happy to say yes, if we have, the public also the same thing, they said we had no idea, so I think if we have an opportunity here to the public and it goes through a little bit better process, I have no problem if we decide we're going if we decide we're going to do it after that.
Well, I, I have the opposite experience. I've talked to tons of people who are so happy that there's going to be a stop sign there. And I'm sorry for the inconvenience of the cars, but the safety of our children is far more important. That's the bottom.
So, so quickly, just to touch on that, as someone that lives in the area and observes it on a daily basis, such as this morning, I saw two bicycles on it, and I saw about thirty, forty cars.
That's right. That's, that's my point, exactly. That's my point, exactly. You saw two bicycles and forty cars.
We will be on the agenda, and you'll have plenty of time to have your argument then.
And we'll hold off taking action until it's come back to council.
Right, okay.
When's it coming back?
I don't know yet. I was, just got the request, so I'll, it would trail on the list, so.
Okay.
Hopefully in summertime, when we can observe people actually riding bikes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Steve?
I just wanted to make sure, I wasn't sure if you were ready to adjourn. I just wanted to carry-
I am. I'm more than ready.
There was one last thing I wanted, very quickly, I wanted to show, tell everybody what we had on the list for the January 22nd meeting. So right now, we have several things. We've got a disaster preparedness presentation. We also have a brief presentation for outgoing Plan Commissioner John Merk. And I also know that we had the question that came up tonight about at some point scheduling a future presentation to talk about Creek Road.
Yes.
I didn't hear a date specific on that presentation. Also coming back for January 22nd public hearing on the fee study, we have taxi ordinance and the AD ordinance cleanup. Those should be fairly quick items. They shouldn't be long items. Adaptive use for historic buildings, the ATP grant, and then requested tonight, the discussion about the status of individual commissioners, and then, and then the ordinance. Also on consent calendar, we should have a historic resources report, and the-
Playhouse?
Correct. And, and a modification to the lease with help of Ojai regarding the Norman D. Barn. I would also put that on consent. So a lot of items for January 22nd.
Mayor, I have one, one quick question regarding all this. Is there any way that you can present that in writing to us, or is that a breach of protocols?
Sure.
But I would think that, again, so we don't get blindsided in some of these discussions, that if we're given an opportunity to do our own homework and receive some of these lists for future agendas, it would benefit all of us.
Sure.
Yeah, maybe, Steve, you could just, under future agenda items, just put that same list that you already had.
We have had a request from the newspaper, and one of the dilemmas that the staff has as to when you release something to say this is going to be on the agenda, when the agenda hasn't been firmed up, is that a benefit or not? But there are, the, I, I meet with the city manager, we'll probably meet what day, on Thursday, to go over that. It seems to me that we can have, you know, tentatively scheduled a list and give that both to the paper, and at the same time, the council will get it. And then at least you'll know kind of what's there. We won't have any surprises, I don't think.
Now, are we then-
Some of it we won't get to.
And Mayor, then if we're allowed to, I'm sorry, Steve, and then if we're allowed to, can we actually comment back on that agenda to you, or how does that work?
Well, I, it, he's got to get the thing out by Tuesday, and they couldn't have-
Okay, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, we start going sideways at that point, yeah, unfortunately. But I could go as far as, I, I've, I've mapped out the first quarter so far this year, so I've gotten a little farther along than I've been able to in the past. So I can provide that the council just knows, you know, farther out, it's a little bit less set in stone. But at least it gives you an idea of what we're looking at for the next three months.
And then I couldn't, I couldn't end tonight unless I asked for one last thing. Can we, can we, when can we do a closed session with the city manager?
That's also on the 22nd. I forgot to mention that.